Close session is now in order. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bana?
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Present.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Councilmember Zapata?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Present. Could you read the next items into the record?
During closed session, the council will discuss the following items: Conference with Labor Negotiators, Agency Representatives, Sharon Taylor and Jack Huge, Employer Organizations, SEIU Local 1021 Full-Time and Part-Time Units, IFPTE Local 21 Mid-Level Management and Executive Management Units, Richmond Police Officers Association, Richmond Police Management Association, IAAF Local 188, and Richmond Fire Management Association. Under Conference with Real Property Negotiators, the property is Metro Walk Phase Two at Richmond Transit Village. Agency Negotiators, Nanette Beecham, Lena Velasco, and Susan Blatch. Negotiating Parties, Pacific West Builders, Inc., San Francisco Bay Area Rapid Transit District, Successor Agency, and City of Richmond. Under Negotiation, Price and Terms of Payment, Eleventh Amendment Disposition and Development Agreement. Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, A Significant Exposure, There's One Case, and under Public Employee Performance Evaluation, the title is City Manager.
Thank you. Do we have public comment?
We do not have any requests to address the council.
Okay, since there's no public comment, then we adjourn to closed session. Silence in the audience, please. This session is now in order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call?
Councilmember Bana?
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Present.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Councilmember Zapata?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here. Next item?
Next item is Statement of Conflict of Interest. Are there any? Hearing none? Our next item would be Agenda Review.
I have a couple of items that I'd like to move. I want to move P3 to first item after consent. Item 3A. And also, for expedience sake, to make sure we get measure X monies or make us more susceptible to measure X monies, I want to hear S4 right after P3A. And S4 is the Hilltop Green Emergency Evacuation Broke. Any other changes? If not, let's move on.
Our next item is a report from the city attorney of final decisions made during closed session.
Yes, on the closed session agenda, the item of labor negotiations, we gave a report on the status of bargaining units. Several of the items are on the agenda for tonight. There was no reportable action taken. Direction was given to the negotiator. The real estate item, which is the Metro Walk Phase Two project, report was given on the status of that real estate negotiation and direction was given for further negotiations to the negotiator. The item listed C3, which is exposure to litigation in one case. That was not discussed. And then the last item on the evaluation of the city manager. There was a discussion of the item and there was no reportable action.
Our next item is reports of off, oh, I'm sorry, report from the city manager.
Thank you, KCRP. Can you please put up the slide deck? Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening, I'm going to briefly run through several events that we were engaged with, many of them with you this last week and things that we have forthcoming. Next slide, please. So there's been so many great activities taking place that I thought it would be helpful if we start trying to have a slide deck weekly so we can briefly highlight them. Next slide. Upcoming, we have the Caltrans Bay Area Career Fair that will take place on May 31st from 9:30 to 1:30. It will take place at 111 Grand Avenue in Oakland, California. If you would like assistance and additional information pertaining to this item, please contact Employment and Training and Richmond Works at 510-307-8014. Again, 510-307-818014 for additional information. Next slide. I'm excited to also announce that Employment and Training is launching the 2324 Summer Youth Employment. It's now open. There, we're accepting requests for sponsorship and we're really excited that we're going to be able to offer young people jobs in our community from the ages of 14 to 24. For additional information, you can email youthworks@richmoneworks.org or call 510-412-2044. Next slide. Love Your Block is also a wonderful program that we have in our community where supplies are provided for volunteers and up to $1,000 is provided to help encourage cleanups and beautification projects. To learn more, please visit www.richmondloveyourblock.org or you can call 510-620-6563. This is a really great opportunity for those of you in the community looking to beautify your neighborhoods to partner with the city and the city council members for the respective districts to do so. Next slide. We also had a really exciting event take place. We've been working really diligently to increase the supply and the affordable housing stock in Richmond. We're happy to report that we had our Nevin Plaza Affordable Housing groundbreaking. It took place on May 19th at 11:00 a.m. This is a two-phase project. The first phase is renovation of the existing building. And we're happy that this work is happening in collaboration and through the leadership of the city council to increase affordable housing in partnership with the housing authority and EAH. Next slide. And also, it's important to note that that development will continue to provide senior affordable housing as well as housing for persons with disability. Also want to thank Pogo Park. They hosted a lunch this week that was attended by many city staff and just want to thank all of the City of Richmond staff members for the work that they do in support of our local community-based organizations such as Pogo Park. Next slide. Many of you may have seen a lot of the great work happening to remove blight and restore our civic center. The City of Richmond, in collaboration with Youth Jobs Corpse, has engaged in a blight removal and neighborhood revitalization program started on April 1st. And so it includes justice-involved young adults who received, and they'll receive five industry-recognized certificates and vocational training through the course of the program. This is a partnership between Employment and Training and Public Works that enables people who participate to be in a position to apply for maintenance aid positions in our community. They've already made huge improvements in our community, especially here at City Hall, and the work is ongoing. Just want to thank them for their support and their work. Next slide. Also want to commend Michelle Mylum, Assembly Member Wix. Honored Michelle as California Legislative. Michelle was as Woman of the Year, and so this is a really exceptional honor. And so we really commend and thank Ms. Mylum for all the work that she does in our community. Next slide. We also commenced with goal setting with the city council on Monday. So we were all just together yesterday in the Bermuda Room. So thank you again for your dedication to working with us to establish goals and objectives. Next slide. We also had swearing in last week of two new academy graduates joined our Richmond Police Department. So we thank them for deciding and choosing to serve in Richmond. Next slide. Also, last but not least, Bike to Work Day was a huge success as always. We had five Energizer stations throughout the Richmond community. They were very well-attended and really thank all the community-based organizations and including Rich City Rides, also private sector partners such as SunPower and Kaiser East Bay, Bike East Bay, and also want to thank Samantha Carr in the city manager's office for always working diligently to help coordinate the event with many stakeholders. So thank you again. This is a glance of what we did last week and one thing that happened yesterday. And so it's been very busy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is Reports of Officers, Referrals to Staff, and General Reports, including AB 1234 reports.
A lot of things happened over the week. Many of us attended them. Does anyone want to speak?
I'll just quickly mention a few things. First of all, I want to echo what the city manager said about the kickoff for the Nevin Plaza Rehab. It was a great event. Thank you to city staff. Nanette, why am I forgetting Nanette Beecham, right? Okay. For really doing a great job on that. I also was at a wonderful event at Levanya Dejean School on Friday night. It was organized by Rich City Kids, and that's an after-school program. And this was a talent, like a recital of all their talent, very talented kids, very devoted teachers. So that was fun. And then there was, I went to an event at Marina Bay Park on Sunday, or on Saturday afternoon, rather. Miranda's Family Daycare had their 35th anniversary, and it turns out the city clerk was there as well because her kids, and I think her daughter's kids, are part of a generational group that have stayed with this daycare and a wonderful woman who runs it. And it was a great weekend to go to a lot of events.
So Sahila, have your hand up?
Yes.
Thank you. This weekend, we had our first District 2 Strategy Goal Setting Meeting. Thank you for everyone who attended and participated. It really helped me out in bringing forth the needs of the community to the goal-setting yesterday. Can't believe just yesterday was Monday. So that was really great. Thank you for everyone. Also, congrats again to Michelle Mylum. Very, very well deserved. So thank you, Michelle, for all your great work. I also attended the Nistrom Sixth Grade Class Graduation Pizza Party, and that was great. So that's just some of the events. So thank you for those and congrats again to Michelle.
Thank you. So Councilmember Bana?
Thank you very much. First, I would like to thank the city staff for many things they do, including, I forgot to thank Abino and other city staff for helping all of us to be present at Cinco de Mayo. I would like to thank the fire department and also volunteers, Diane Schwein and David, for having, holding the first set of CERT classes after the epidemic. So we are very glad. We hope to have the second series of classes towards the end of summer. You may want to contact the fire department if you're interested in learning about CERT. I have some good news for you. I've been invited to join the Board of Directors of Civic Well, and I accepted happily. It's a great organization. The city is a member and attending their conferences is a city to the city council members. And I'm urging my fellow city council members to attend the next conference, which is in Santa Rosa and California Adaptation Forum with regards to climate change. It's not only that we learn about the new legislation and about the new science, new possibilities. We also learned about new grant opportunities. That's why I asked the city manager to have one of the staff participate in that. So it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, just kind of echo a couple of things. Definitely also participated in the Nevin celebration for the Nevin Housing Rehab. And just wanted to say that it is definitely a council, my own personal and council objective, to really make sure we increase access to housing in Richmond, affordable housing as well as other housing. So that is just a huge success of having that rehab happen and move forward. I'm really glad that that's happening. After that, went swing over to the Nistrom Elementary Sixth Grade Graduation. And I, you know, being at that graduation gave me a moment to reflect how important it is for our kids, all of our kids, to know that their city is behind them at every step of the way, that they're not forgotten, that we show up for them at their graduation day. And I really wanted to thank the neighborhood councils, the Coronado Neighborhood Council and the Santa Fe Neighborhood Council for really holding down and celebrating our kids so they don't feel like they're left out on their own and nobody really cares about them. Finally, I wanted to say that, you know, there is a, there are councilmember Bana and myself and Councilmember Jimenez have been working concertedly on moving forward with assessing our parks and seeing where there's opportunities to create new infrastructure such as soccer fields for our population who really enjoy soccer and who see the benefit of the field that we have at MLK Park and want to see what we can do about doing that in other parks across Richmond. So I wanted to make sure you know that we're working on it. We have some ideas. We're moving forward in meetings. We're reaching out to the school district and other folks to keep moving this forward with other efforts that the city staff have been working on. So you'll hear more on that as we move forward. And to say that that effort is not just about soccer fields, but it's about making sure we have better park resources and facilities of all types for everyone in the community. But we definitely want to make sure that we address the lack of soccer fields. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I thought I saw a hand up. Go ahead. Councilmember Jimenez?
I just wanted to say also that the Richmond High School did the youth action at Research Night, and it was really great to see all the research outcomes that the student did. Thank you to teacher Mr. Chacon for inviting us. And I really enjoy that event and how they are really supporting and pushing the students in the high school to do research. And they were many, many different research that with really good results. So hopefully, next year, we all can attend. Thank you.
Thank you. From the city manager's report down to the reports from council members, you can tell that the City of Richmond is doing wonderful things, and we will continue to do wonderful things. So I want to thank the city council for their support for the community, and I want to thank the community for inviting us and letting us feel that we are together. Next item.
Next item is a crime report from the police chief.
Evening, Mayor Martinez and councilmembers. Tonight, I have a brief update on crime trends and other police matters that the police department is working on. I'll start with the crime report for the month of May. We had 60 aggravated assaults, 23 robberies, five sexual assaults, 33 burglaries, 86 thefts, and 115 stolen vehicles. In addition, our staff towed 255 vehicles, responded to 160 traffic collisions, and handled 17 DUIs and recovered 18 firearms. Of the crime trends we are monitoring, we noticed that there was a 27% increase in robberies over the last month. We are again seeing ATM robberies where people are being followed after using ATM machines around the city. This is not specific to Richmond. We've been seeing this in Oakland and other areas in the Bay Area, other cities in the Bay Area. We are urging people to be cognizant of their surroundings and ask them to call 911 if they believe that they are being followed. We also had a 33% increase in vehicle thefts with 115 vehicles that were stolen just this month alone. We are asking the community to make sure that they are locking their vehicles and utilizing a club device or alarm if they are able to do so. And speaking of stolen vehicles, I want to update you all on the Flock camera installation. So back in February, you all approved a contract with Flock Safety to provide license plate readers in various areas of the city. Currently, 26 of the 30 cameras that were approved have been installed in 16 different locations throughout the city. We've already had a lot of success with the system. I'll highlight a few of those successes. So as I indicated earlier, we have a problem with stolen vehicles, 115 vehicles stolen this month alone. Luckily with Flock, once the license plate is entered into the stolen vehicle system, if that vehicle travels through one of our Flock locations, it alerts the officers that there is a stolen vehicle and the location that it traveled through. We have been able to locate multiple stolen vehicles after receiving Flock hits. One such vehicle was a wheelchair-accessible van, which the owner needed to transport a disabled family member. We were able to return that vehicle back to the owner in a timely manner so that the vehicle could be used for its intended purpose. Officers received another Flock hit, which alerted them to an armed felony vehicle traveling through the city. A sergeant located the vehicle, and the vehicle immediately fled. Due to the high speeds on the streets, the pursuit was terminated. The vehicle was last seen getting onto the freeway and traveling out of the city of Richmond. The vehicle was determined to be a carjacks vehicle with two armed suspects out of the city of Oakland. Unfortunately, we're not able to capture that vehicle. There's another incident when a person called our dispatch to advise of a subject that they saw enter a vehicle with a long rifle. They were able to provide the license plate of that vehicle that the person entered, and our officers used the Flock Safety Camera System to see if that vehicle had traveled through any of the locations where we have Flock cameras. Officers were able to determine a direction of travel and located that vehicle along with the subject and the firearm, the rifle, in that vehicle. And one other hit was a hit for a vehicle that, out of Livermore, that was involved in sideshow activity where Livermore was able to author a search warrant for the vehicle. We were able to seize the vehicle for being involved in sideshows for the city of Livermore. So those are just a few of the hits that we've seen. We haven't even thoroughly rolled out the system yet. There still needs to be training with our officers. All of the cameras aren't up. Most of them are. We have 30 were approved. We have 26 up, so there's still four more to go. They should be installed within the next couple of weeks. There has been a lot of discussion around traffic safety, so I wanted to provide some information about collisions around the city. So just this year alone, we've had 1,144 traffic collisions reported throughout the city. By district, the northern district has the most traffic collisions with 468, the southern district with 372, and central district with 304. And by Beat, Beat 7, which is where we are right now, this area around Civic Center, all the way to San Pablo Avenue to the furthest point north of the city. Beat 7, for the last three years in a row, has the most amount of traffic collisions in the city. The location with the most traffic collisions is Richmond Parkway and San Pablo Avenue. This year alone, we've had 16 collisions at that intersection. Following that, we have a couple different areas, McBride and San Pablo Avenue, 37th and Barrett, Richmond Parkway and Atlas, 37th and McDonald, 25th and McDonald. Those areas have double digits in terms of traffic collisions just this year alone. And looking, and again, looking at the last three years, the northern district does have the most amount of traffic collisions in the city. Few other items that the police department is working on. We are working to bring back our Explorer program. We know it was a, it was a successful program that everybody enjoyed seeing the Explorers at community events. Unfortunately, we, when COVID occurred, we weren't able to meet with the Explorers anymore. And our, we couldn't proceed with the program. So we're now partnering with PAL to get our program up and running so that we can have our Explorers back with us at different events around the city and that we can train young people who want to be in this profession to start training to be police officers. We are also, I met with my team and Daniel Chivaria's team from Public Works, worked, met to start talking about street sweeping enforcement again. And we determined that we'll have to actually come back to council probably in the next month to get additional direction, clarification and direction around enforcement because of the last direction had some things that we had a lot of questions about. So we'll be coming back to you with that very soon. See, last month and this month, we've been meeting with the business owners and various people from the 23rd Street Corridor regarding crime issues and other issues along the corridor. And you'll hear a presentation a little later tonight on human trafficking issues. And we are also working with, working on parking enforcement issues as well as partnering with Public Works and, I'm sorry, code enforcement on street vendor issues that have been raised by the merchants. Other issues we're working on are unhoused issues in the Point, Richmond area. Michelle has been coordinating with Caltrains and Core to find long-term solutions to address the unhoused community in the area and figure out ways to address potential drug dealing. We are also prepping for Juneteenth and 3rd of July festivities around the city. And lastly, we continue to be understaffed, which necessitates the need for mandatory overtime. But we were able to hire several professional staff positions this month to include a property tech, a jailer, crime scene technician, and another parking enforcement. So now we have four. We have one more vacancy to fill. And we graduated two police officer trainees from the Oakland Police Academy. Now take any questions.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you, Chief French, for the presentation. I just, I couldn't hear well when you talk about the collisions and you mentioned districts. So can you go down again about what districts had the most collusion? Thank you.
Sure. So so Beat 7, which is in, we, so when I talk about districts, we break up the districts in the city according to northern, central, and southern, not by council districts. Hopefully, in the future, we could figure out how to coordinate the council districts as opposed to the policing districts that we've been using for a long time. But the area that has the most collisions is your area, which is Beat 7. Historically, year after year, Beat 7, which is this area that we're in, has the most amount of traffic collisions in the city.
Yeah, thank you.
I was, I was wanting her to say, followed by what? I think you had, you said, I think you said northern district, which goes all the way beyond. beyond like, like district. It's all the way north.
Yes, so northern district is the um, largest district in the city because it, it in um, incorporates all the way up to Castro Ranch and the Carriage Hills area, some of the Hilltop area as well as um, the northern area here.
And you said followed by the southern district.
Yes, followed by the southern district.
The southern district includes what areas?
That includes your area, um, the south side, which is um, so to give you some numbers, I know that you're concerned about um, traffic collisions around Carlson. Cutting and Carlson had twelve collisions just this year alone. Um, Cutting and Carlson, uh, I'm sorry, Cutting and Thirty-seventh had ten collisions. Carlson and South Fifty-Fifth had twelve collisions, and Cutting and South Forty-Ninth had eight collisions. Those are the top four locations in uh, Beat Three, which is the southern area um, for collisions this year.
Thank you. If there are no, oh, okay, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Sopera.
Thank you for the great report, especially on the cameras. Um, I've been looking at them every time I drive and waving. Uh,
They don't, they don't capture people. They only capture license plates.
Good to know. Yes. Um, the seventeen firearms, you said, you, you, you guys uh, found seventeen firearms. Can you shed a little more light on that? Uh, were they in homes and cars? How would, how did we come up into those seventeen firearms?
So um, there was actually eighteen.
Oh, eighteen?
And so we, we come across them in various ways. So as I explained with the Flock camera, was somebody calling in? We were able to recover a firearm um, that someone directed us to, that somebody was in a vehicle. So that was one firearm um, uh, recovered. Um, another incident where we had a shots fired call where people were shooting off uh, firearms in a backyard. We were able to write a search warrant for that residence and recovers a couple of firearms in that incident. So there's, there's multiple ways um, through the Flock Camera System. I think there were actually either two or three that we were able to recover firearms from the Flock System.
So that they're already paying uh, off what, what they were worth there. So thank you. Uh, in terms of the stolen vehicles, do we track the type? There was an article a couple, about a week ago or so, of a recall of a certain vehicle type because they were very easy to open and steal.
So we haven't been tracking the type. It's easy for us to go back and look at. I just need somebody to have the time and, and effort to, to go back to look at if there's, you know, uh, three main vehicles. I know historically they've been Toyota, um, older Toyota vehicles. Um, but now we're seeing, I, I, I remember just the, in the past month, we've been seeing a lot of Kias. So
I think that was on the article. They were very easy to open. Free cars. Take one. Okay, no, just kidding. Um, and then the coalition, the, the, the vehicle accidents, do we know uh, why they were happening? Running red lights, speeding?
Variety of issues.
Thank you. No more questions.
All right, uh, Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you for your report. Um, I do want to understand a little bit more about the cameras. I'm like, I'm excited to hear the results. And I wonder how, how long have they been installed?
So we started the installation process in April.
Mm-hmm. So just one month-ish, one month-ish?
Almost two now.
And we're seeing these kinds of results. I wonder if you have thoughts now on where you'd like to go with this, this program, or if you're gonna do some particular type of report back or monitoring so we can understand the impact? And then where you'd like to go with the program?
Sure. So when I initially asked for the thirty um, cameras, it's because that's what I had in my that I can fund in my budget. Uh, we need way more than thirty cameras. So thirty cameras only covers like sixteen locations throughout the city because for intersections, you need like two and even sometimes four cameras just to cover the intersection. So we were only able to care, uh, cover sixteen areas around the city. So when we determined those locations, we looked at crime. We really wanted to make sure that we're able to capture the areas in which, you know, we've had shootings and, and other violent crimes occur. But, you know, as you know, we have issues with um, illegal dumping and just a, a array of issues. San Pablo has close to a hundred cameras in their city. And you know, we completely surround them. They're very small. Um, but they have cameras at every single entry exit point of the city so they could capture the license plates of all the cars going in and out of their city. Um, that's helpful for them when they have a, a crime. It's helpful for us because we actually ask them to, you know, look things up for us too. Um, but actually, so I would love to be able to do something like that in our city, have exit entry points and then also the, the areas that we respond to a lot for, for crim- for uh, criminal activity.
Yeah. Considering it's only one month of data so far, it'd be really interesting for me to see like an impact report um, that maybe come back at the end of, of the next kind of quarter to see like how these cameras have been able to, you know, support the impact of the police department and then, you know, figure out what else we can do. Because it sounds like, you know, from, from what you're saying, is they're able to, to really um, do something that we haven't, haven't, haven't been able to do so much, which is get, get uh, what am I trying to say? Uh, like respond sooner, more effectively to things that are happening instead of just coming after everything is done, you know? Um, and, and help even in some, at least in one case, possibly prevent a violent crime by, you know, kind of stopping the person with a gun. So that to me is really interesting and I'd like to follow along and see what happens next.
Absolutely. I'd love to come back and give a report um, after maybe the first quarter that we have everything up and running. But I can tell you that already we get more hits on the Flock Camera System than we're able to respond to. So the hits will come out like stolen vehicle or whatever the hit might be, felony vehicle, meaning another city might have put it in there in the system that this car was involved in, you know, a, a chase in their city or whatever it might be. And we can't even get to all the hits that we're getting. Um, but I, I, I think it's a great tool so far. Um, and I think as we increase our staffing and get up to staff, then we can address even more of these uh, hits that we're receiving.
Um, actually, I'm sorry. There was one other thing that I wanted to actually ask you about in um, it's something that uh, you mentioned filling vacancies. And we had a brief conversation about um, one of the um, one of the uh, struggles that the police department and possibly also fire have is the extraordinary um, kind of lead time you need in order to bring people on. And I wonder if you could say a couple of words just in this forum on what that lead time is? And, and what you might need in order to kind of get ahead and, and catch up with your, your vacancies? Because I don't, I'm not sure everyone is really aware of that extraordinary lead time that the police and fire have on hiring.
Sure. Thank you for that question. So it takes, I, I, this is the analogy I like to use. It takes uh, two weeks for somebody to quit. I mean, they quit, they give their two weeks and they're gone. It takes me at least eighteen months to bring somebody back on to work to go through the uh, hiring process, background, get them hired, get them trained. If they have to go through the academy and get them trained to solo patrol, it takes about fifteen to eighteen months to go through that entire process. So that's very difficult when we're losing people at a steady rate and um, it takes so long to bring somebody new on.
Thank you. I think it's important for people to understand that dynamic.
All right. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's always great to hear what's going on in the city. So next item, please.
Our next item is open for, it's opportunity for the public to comment on items that remain on the consent calendar or items that are not on the agenda. They also comment on report from the city manager, reports of officers, and the crime report from the police chief. If you are joining us uh, via Zoom, please raise your hand at this time. We do have speakers in, in um, the chambers. We'll call the speakers in the chambers first. Then we'll move to the um, the people that are joining us via Zoom. And just as a reminder, item P three A has been removed from the consent calendar. So if you'd like to comment on that item, please wait until that item is called. And I'd like to remind the public to please keep your comments respectful. As I call your name, please line up in the order that I call you. Um, Philip Rosenthal, Mark Wasberg, Inti Gonzalez, Sally Heinman, Akoslo Corominos, Don Gosney, Rick Perez, Patricia Perez, and Jamin Parcell. You'll each have up to two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Philip Rosenthal. I'm the uh, PRNC president, but I'm here just independently to discuss uh, disturbing situation that Chief French mentioned concerning the influx of a tripling of mentally ill and drug addicted homeless people in the tiny Point Richmond neighborhood from Second Avenue to the Point Triangle. Um, I want to thank Michelle Malam for working tirelessly on this issue, but it is way bigger than Michelle and the limited police staff can handle. Two weeks ago, we had four mentally ill or drug addicted people in one block. One ass- um, assaulting people with a pipe, one half nude man attacking children outside of the plunge, another one at the plunge screaming profanities in front of the children during school, uh, during children's swim hour. And the fourth was a mentally ill woman uh, running half nude in the middle of the street. This was all in one block. Uh, parents were pulling their children off of the street. We've had two homeless deaths in our area. My understanding from the PTA president is one of the homeless people died during a school event on Washington Elementary School property. We have a mentally ill guy who lives in the crosswalk leading to the elementary school. And I believe um, Councilmember Jimenez's child goes to Washington Elementary perhaps, who was jumping out of the hedges and chasing a mother and child with this weapon, which he also brandished with uh, somebody who was a patron at the pub across the street. Uh, he has recently been arrested. This is his second or third arrest, and we are afraid that he is either going to be deposited or make his way back to his familiar corner. We're asking for um, the mayor's office to work with the ca- uh, to work with the county commissioner, to work with CalTrans to fix this uh, encampment, please. And I've sent emails to all of you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Wasberg, followed by Inti Gonzalez.
Ready? This uh, homeless uh, plan you have is a totally disaster. The stupidest thing anybody can do. You know it's not gonna work. You're letting these people live for free. You just heard the man. They're a bunch of idiots out there who don't want to work. You haven't set up no one program in two years to get these people off the streets. All you're doing is paying the money. You got that homeless candidate in Castro, living there for free. More people are gonna come. Did you ever try to get these people up there on the uh, up there on Hilltop when they had the jobs fair? Do you rent a van and load people up, go there? No. You just want these people to live for free. And who's paying for it? It's the taxpayer. These hardworking work people have to pay for it while this McLaughlin over here, she's spearheading the whole entire thing. She wants to make Richmond a welfare city. She's over there taxing the hell out of the businesses so she could give the money to the poor. This idiot over there is playing Robin Hood. Like John Joya, he had to call the sheriff to get the homeless people out of his PEP program because they didn't want to leave. Now all they want to do is stay there and live for free and eat and sleep and shit, three hots in a car, prison. You guys are just wa- wasted money. It ain't gonna work. You haven't solved one problem of the homeless people yet. Going down to McDonald Avenue, you see a bunch of garbage people hanging around doing drugs and alcohol. I see it every day in Elsabranee. They wouldn't go, go out and look for a job if you had a gun pointed to their head. You're just wasting time. If they don't want to work, you let them rot. They'd be better off, some of them be better off committing suicide than living like an animal. For sixteen years, I lived on the streets in my truck. The last six years, I had money. I was recycling twenty-four seven. Every week I had three, four hundred dollars in my pocket. I didn't get into drugs or alcohol. You're just wasting your time, McLaughlin, and you know it.
Our next speaker is Inti Gonzalez, followed by Sally Heinman.
Hello, my name is Inti Gonzalez. I'm a youth organizer of Tiny Village Spirit. Uh, I am here to share about our new project, the Richmond Tiny House Village Farm and Garden Project. Um, and I would like to start with the need. Um, well, location of the uh, Richmond Tiny House Village Farm and Garden is located at one seventy-five Twenty-third Street on Bissell Avenue between Twenty-second and Twenty-third Street. And I would like to start with talking about the need. I have had many friends struggling with homelessness, one of whom was even born into homelessness, who until the age of six thought that everyone lived in a car. Up until recent, recently, I had been living in a garage. I, like many youth struggling with homelessness, don't have the support of family. We don't have the stability that is required to educate ourselves. We are the most vulnerable because of our lack of s- life skills, support, and education. Don't let youth's first steps into life be the pit of homelessness. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sally Heinman, followed by Ascalo Corominos.
Hi, I'm Sally Heinman. Um, and good evening, um, Mayor Martinez and members of council. It's wonderful to get to meet you. I'm a um, thirty-four-year um, Quaker minister working with unsheltered people here in the East Bay. Um, and I'm involved in an organization called Tiny Village Spirit, which is promoting as a super successful positive solution to homelessness, tiny, tiny house villages, um, which can be just absolutely wonderful and super successful for meeting emergency housing needs. And uh, we're talking tonight, uh, three of us are here tonight to share with you about a six-agency collaborative. And Inti was talking about our site. Um, we are a collaboration between ARPAL, PAL, um, Rebuilding Together, SOS Richmond, University of San Francisco Architecture School, um, Hope Solutions and, and Tiny Village Spirit. And um, we are, we are promoting an amendment to the lease that ARPAL has now um, to create a farm and garden at one seventy-five Twenty-third Street, um, right a, a block away from ARPAL. Um, this project is modeled after a really successful first-in-nation youth tiny house village that's been created in Oakland. That's, that's won four awards in two thousand twenty-one, including an architecture award. Um, it's a strongly youth-led project and it's almost all volunteer-led. So we're bringing to Richmond just a ton of resources. Um, we'll be raising almost a million dollars from private sources, so it's not going to be taxpayer money. Um, and we're working really closely with the neighborhood councils as stakeholders in our projects. We're super excited about that. Um, so we're going to be sharing with you more about this project. It's a, it's a small project. We're going to start out by creating six tiny houses that are going to be linked to the job training that ARPAL is doing in their culinary program. Um, and, and so then we'll work with the neighborhood councils and ultimately we hope to double the number of units of emergency housing for youth ages eighteen to twenty-four up
Your time's expired.
Up to twelve. Um, so anyway, we'll be talking with you more and we just
Your time is expired.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ascalo Corominos, followed by Don Gosney.
Hello, everybody. Um, I'm Acasio Corominos. Um, I'm an alumni at the University of San Francisco. Um, and it's great to be in front of the council here today. Um, so through the University of San Francisco, we've been able to design um, Oakland's prominent um, tiny house village that is housing about fifty um, homeless youth. Um, and through my experience and being able to actually see the project come to life, um, I've actually hopped onto this project with Sally Heinman to actually try to um, encourage Richmond to build a tiny house village here in Richmond. Um, through the design, um, we've been able to um, really see how um, the tiny house villages really impact our communities. And um, it would be wonderful to um, see how um, a design here could really work out. Um, so I've been working really closely with ARPAL, um, Larry Lewis, um, as well as a lot of, attending a lot of um, council meetings, um, really trying to push um, this design um, that we've been working on. I've been working for about six months now um, on the design. And um, right now, um, I have a couple renderings and drawings um, that I've come up with. And um, And there's areas meant to house about seven youth in the beginning, but we're hoping to expand up to 13 by the end of 2024. The site is quite large and significant, so it's going to really help with the culinary program that's at ARPAL that we're hoping to introduce as well, really give a nice stepping stone for a lot of homeless youth here in Richmond, California. So within the site, we're hoping to have culinary storage, about 50-plus planters, the size of four foot by eight feet. So there would be a significant amount of food produced for the youth. And through this food that's produced can be given to the ARPAL community. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Don Gosny.
Thank you. For the last time until about 10 months from now, I stand before you tonight to invite the public to apply for high-paying careers with great benefits in the Plumbers and Steamfitters Local 342. As I've been saying for years, we're not offering jobs, we're offering careers. By most people's standards, when we tell them we start apprentices straight out of high school at more than $60,000 a year with more than 12% wage increases for each of the first five years until they become journey persons, they're impressed. And when we tell them that they get more than $96,000 a year worth of benefits, which includes a Cadillac of healthcare plans and multiple pensions, they're even more impressed. We pay for all the training, and we'll even train you to take the application test. If it has anything to do with pipes, we build it. Our people are highly trained and highly skilled at what they do. Otherwise, we couldn't demand the highest wages and benefits in the building trades. We build and maintain the area's refineries to the highest standards. We build hospitals, super lasers, pharmaceutical plants. We build everything in Silicon Valley, high rises, supermarkets, pipelines. Signups take an examination to validate your capable of learning continues till the end of May. That's just one more week. I strongly advise interested persons to sign up while they still can. They can always decline when offered a test date, but no one's going to reopen the application process if you miss the deadline. It's an online application and it only takes a few minutes. For more information, I beg you to call me, Don Gosny, at 510-685-2403. That's 685-2403, or email me at dongosny@comcast.net. Let me help you with that career opportunity that you can't pass up. Applicants must be 18 years of age or older, have a high school diploma or a GED, and be physically capable of doing the work. The test has nothing to do with your knowledge about piping systems. It's basic arithmetic and mechanical reasoning. We even offer local classes for free to help you practice for the test. I'll even work with you to help shepherd you through the process. All you have to do is to reach out and ask for an application packet. It's a chance of a lifetime. Don't pass it up.
Our next speaker is Rick Perez, followed by Patricia Perez. And our last speaker in the chambers will be Jamin Purcell.
First thing that happened to me when I came here right now is I see this article in the Richmond Pulse about in custody death and excited delirium. It's not a real medical term, but the Richmond Police and many police departments try to use that. It's disgusting. And then I got tremendous respect for Abisa, but for her to refer to the, the city as, like the gang members do, north, south, central, and south side, it doesn't seem very professional. She's very professional, but anyway, I don't like hearing that. The main reason I'm, one of the things that was brought to my attention lately was why do I keep coming up here? And the reason I keep coming up here is because I don't want this horrible thing that happened to my family to happen to anybody else's family ever. I, these, the way the, the police just kind of pushed it off, just like they do this excited delirium scenario. It's just horrible. It's, God, I'm losing my thought here, but I just don't I just don't like the, you know, we, I was told there was a million 500,000 on the table for my family for the loss of my son. That wasn't the case for me. The case for me was getting justice. We were told we couldn't discuss this matter because it was in investigation and stuff. That's why we settled immediately. It's, this is a horrible thing that a lot of people don't want to listen to us on this, so. So much more to say. Thank you.
Patricia Perez.
My grandson, Petey, does not have a voice, so as long as I live, I will be Petey's voice. I keep signs on our cars to tell people what happened to him. Not only Petey, but it's happened to thou, over 1,000 people every year are killed by the police across the USA. When people read the sign and get beside our car and give us a thumbs up, I feel that my message is not in vain. Today, driving in Pleasant Hill, a young man gave us a thumbs up. People who have lost a family member to police killing know what the police, know that police killing and brutality is real. With the headlines about bad police behavior very often in the news and the East Bay Times articles like "Police Accused in Degree Scam", December 11, 2022, "East Bay Saw Year of Violence Cop Cases", January 1, 2023, and so many of the Antioch Police sending offensive racist texts and the Antioch leaders call for firing the officers. The question is, how can the general public not see that not all police officers are good? Police are trained in the police academies in the READ technique of interrogation. Cops are trained to falsely accuse individuals. Cops are trained to fabricate false evidence against individuals. Cops can and will lie under oath, commit perjury. People are naive and out of touch with reality to assume that a badge transfers integrity and honor to the person wearing the badge. We need police, but not killer cops and liars. We need honest and good police officers who will uphold the law with integrity.
Our last speaker in person is Jamin Purcell.
So I just want to remind everybody that next month is going to be Pride Month. And part of that, I kind of want to remind you of two other events that are coming up that I hope we can see some attendance at. Reimagining Public Safety Task Force is going to be having an event at King Elementary at June 3 from 10 a.m. to 2:00. And there we are going to be talking about the very, a number of topics that about how we can address public safety here in the city of Richmond, including police procedures and policies, including traffic safety, and as well as harm reduction and poverty reduction. I say that those are attached because one of the things that we, we, we'd like to talk about with Pride is that we are celebrating, but a lot of what we're celebrating is that about what we've overcome. The first Stonewall riot was about a riot against the police brutality against the LGBT community. One of the, and it was led primarily by Black and Brown, transgender, and gender nonconforming people. It was people standing up because they saw that there needed to be a change. I say that because we're going to be having our Pride event here in front of these chambers on noon, on, at noon and on June 4. And as part of that, I want to say that I, I do appreciate how far we have come along. Chief French has a, has met with me as the co-chair of Richmond Royal Pride. I was able to meet the LGBTQ plus liaison Sergeant Patchen. And I appreciate how far they have come because we have seen the homophobia that came out of the Antioch Police Department. And so I know that while there are improvements, there's always more improvement that can be done. And so I really want to speak to that, especially as well with addressing harm reduction with poverty. Because while 77% of LGBT youth, I'm sorry, LGBT youth make up only 7% of our youth in the nation, they make up about 40% of the homeless population. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the speakers that are joining us online.
We currently have three speakers via Zoom. The first speaker is Jesse Turan, Richmond Firefighters L-188, and the last speaker will be Savitri Khalsa. Jesse, please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Hi, I'm Jesse Turan. I am a former resident of the Wrighton Road Homeless Encampment and a Richmond resident. I'm listening to these issues that are coming up, and all of these issues have one thing in common, and that is just inequity of justice. And and Richmond needs to be the moral conscience. The city of Richmond needs to be the moral conscience of the city. Like with regard to the homeless issue, you can't clean out encampments without giving people a place to go. That's unfair, that it's just moving them around. As far as the money that's being used to address homelessness, just so that y'all know, that money is not getting to homeless people. I don't know where it's going. It's being distributed, but we're certainly not getting it. It's not, we're not getting any benefit of it, out of it at all. I know that people don't want encampments or even, they don't want any people who's home, you know, homeless at all to be resettled near their neighborhoods. But it is wrong to move people from where they're living and, and not allow them to go anyplace else. What, what can they do? I mean, I know Mark Wasberg, he wants us to just die. Sorry, we're not going to do that. And as far as oh, the, the deaths that the Richmond Police shooting that was just being mentioned, that has to be investigated. It, it's a blight on the city that something isn't being done about that. It's just wrong. It's just wrong. And Richmond needs to start doing right by all of us, by all the people. It has to start ensuring that justice is done. Because we're all being traumatized by that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Richmond Firefighters Local 188. Please unmute yourself and you may begin. Please state your first and last name for the record.
I'm Mike Velazquez. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and City Staff. This is Mike Velazquez, Richmond Firefighters Local 188 Union President. I would like to quickly thank the Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and City Staff for all the hard work before and during the negotiation process of our MOU. It is appreciated, and Local 188 is grateful for your work and patience. We know it was a long road for both the city and Local 188. With that said, we are optimistic and we look forward to working with everyone again in the new future on new projects. Thank you. You yield my time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Savitri Khalsa. Please unmute yourself and you may begin. Savitri, please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my comments. I'm a resident of Richmond. My name is Savitri Khalsa, and I'm calling to thank you for submitting a plan for dealing with unhoused interventions and strategies throughout the city of Richmond. My main reason for calling tonight is because I would like to say that I do not support building tiny homes in the lot that ARPAL has leased from the city of Richmond. Please do not put a tiny home village in the middle of Richmond. I don't think that this is a suitable transitional age-youth location, both because it's physically surrounded by traffic. It's not a healthy location for them. In that way, it also is an area of the city that is challenged by having homeless encampments, both on the backside of grip, and there's been a lot of challenges locally there. And as other people have mentioned, and most people know that the area of McDonald's Avenue by McDonald's is, is basically very much challenging place for young people. It's not a very healthy location. It isn't a very large location either. The one other thing I'd like to just say is that I did go to the Home Key proposal meetings that the city has hosted. And I support that, and I think that's a great idea, and that would be an appropriate location to put youth as opposed to trying to build 12 tiny houses in addition to the possibility of a beautiful garden that would support the programs that ARPAL is doing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And that was the last speaker.
Thank you. Next item.
Our next items, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar. Just as a reminder, item P, like Peter 3A, that's the contract with Raffless to provide a workforce analysis, has been removed from the consent calendar, so it will not be included in this vote.
Move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of P3A that's been told.
So we have a motion by Vice Mayor McLaughlin and seconded by Councilmember Zapata. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zapata.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Yes.
Councilmember Bana.
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Okay, our next item is item P3A. And that is to approve a contract with Raffless Financial Consultants Incorporated to provide a workforce analysis in alignment with the state audit recommendation in an amount not to exceed $200,000 with a term beginning June 1 of 2023 and ending March 31 of 2024, and appropriate the necessary funding.
Good evening, Council. What we have for you is to approve a contract with Ref Telus for financial consultation to provide a workforce analysis. This item stems from the State Audit Recommendation Number Six, which was to perform a workforce analysis to mitigate the cost of increasing salaries. The city should perform a workforce analysis by, yes?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Yeah, this is, stems from the workforce analysis item from the state audit recommendations, and it was recommendation number six. And that was to mitigate the cost of increasing salaries. The city should perform a workforce analysis by June of 2024. Based on results of the analysis, the city council should consider eliminating vacant positions that it deems no longer necessary. Additionally, the city should assess the needs for each vacant position before it's, it seeks to fill the positions and eliminate any positions that it does not need. So the RFP did go out February 17, 2023. There were quite a number of responses. We actually had two very good responses, of which Ref Telus came out ahead on that, and I will take any questions from council. I haven't have any.
Do we have any, Councilmember Robinson?
So my main question is a question of clarification. In the auditor's report or recommendations, were they only concerned with eliminating positions? Or was there concern with having the right number of positions for different departments?
Their concern, which was, which is on page 21 of their audit report, was to reassess the size of city staff in particular to look at vacant positions. But also, we added succession planning to that and, and department analysis to make sure that whatever current work we have and workflow can be covered by our existing staff. And if we need more staff, we would like that analysis done also.
Any other questions? Okay. So in this workforce analysis, are we also considering the cost factor in terms of new hires, if we need more positions? Exactly how, how are we evaluating cost versus positions?
Um, I do have Ref Telus with me with me tonight and it is Rebecca Hoskin with Ref Telus. And she can explain her analysis in in what is she is going to be doing for us. Do we have Rebecca ready? There we are, Rebecca.
Hello. Uh, thank you so much for having us this evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Yes, um. The way we approach our workforce analysis is pretty much straightforward. Look at what is it you're trying to do? What are your work, what is your workload in each department and work area? What are your services and programs? What is the need for that now? And then probably in the next few years, three to five years, we try to look ahead and see if there's any initiatives that are going to impact that. And then we look at your staffing, what you have right now in terms of work structure and staffing. And are you getting there now? Are you exceeding your levels of service? Are you meeting the levels of service? Are there gaps that need to be filled? And then we make the recommendations to the city in terms of, you know, what staffing level and structure we think would be most applicable to to meet the level of service in the community. Um, as was said, we've also been asked to look at the succession planning aspects of this. Obviously, it doesn't help to remove positions if that's going to cause a huge gap if someone should retire or leave. So you want to make sure you've got some consistency and continuity in the organization. And also, um, you know, to look at vacant positions because that was called out within the auditor's report. Um, but we look at this very holistically. I mean, we're all former public employees and we look, we know what it takes to run an organization and that in particular today, the difficulties with retention recruitment. And so we try to look very holistically and just say, all right, do you have the staff you need to meet the needs today and tomorrow for the city's needs?
Thank you. And um we had a uh a priority is a goal setting session on on Monday. And I'm curious as to how you will incorporate that into your uh study.
Yes, we did make a an amendment to our project plan uh was presented to the city. Um, thanks to some council members who expressed similar questions. Um, we did add in that we will interview each council member as part of this project and and talk to each of you individually to get your take on things in terms of the city's service levels and and priorities. And also, we are going to incorporate and and review service levels against the city council's adopted goals. So that has been incorporated into the plan.
Be fantastic. I I believe this is pulled mostly for uh further information. Uh, Councilmember uh Robinson.
Um, just quickly to say, I just wanted to say thank you to um to uh the contractor who was just up here for making those adjustments and including um the like council in framing the process. You know, what I've heard from, you know, the moment that I became a councilperson um is over and over again from city staff, from different folks pointing out um how how, what a, what a burden, what a, what a stressor it has been to have so many vacancies um in the finance department, in the police department, in in the recreation department, in all these different departments, just having having the few staff who are there, having to try to cover so much more of the workload. And so when, you know, when I'm seeing this workforce analysis, I think it's really important that we do it, but we have to do it in light of current conditions and being really careful not to exacerbate. Um, you know, have a recommended situation that would exacerbate the already difficult situation for staff who are working under mandatory um overtime and um other conditions that are really difficult. So I really appreciate um the inclusion of of feedback from council so we can, you know, kind of frame and set the set the priorities in terms of the kind of service level we'd like for the city to be able to provide. And then also, I think one of the other things that came up late in conversations um before this meeting was that it is also important to take into consideration as you're doing your study, not only the um city manager and the directors um and and so on, but also the um the the um forgetting the name of the level of staff, other staff. I'm sorry, say that again.
Councilmember Robinson, I believe you, there was a reference previously to the division director?
Yes, division directors. Um, to make sure we have their perspective so that we're not making um, you know, a recommendation that's going to negatively impact people who are doing the day in and day out work. Um, it doesn't take that much to make sure that we're listening and hearing everybody and just we can come out with the best plan. So I mean, that's the one thing I would like to recommend that we add is that you definitely not only talk to the senior management, but also talk to those those, that level of directors um to make sure we come up with the best plan. And yes, if there's an opportunity to eliminate a a position that is no longer needed, that's great. And if we really need these positions, I'm hoping that this will also reflect that.
Thank you. Councilmember um Jimenez.
Thank you and thank you staff for working on that. I know that this is something that the state audit had recommended and but thank you also uh Councilmember uh Robinson and Mayor Martinez um for pointed out uh these issues uh around uh the framework, right? The framework of it's not just eliminating position. It's just like looking at what how we want to serve people and what is the best um staffing and a in in many things that we need. Um, my question is around the process and like how eh eh the results be rolling and I I make a comment so you understand what I am asking that um. I don't want to just see that we wait for a year until this process is eh is finished to start doing the hiring or start moving uh towards improving uh uh some of the departments. So I wonder if uh how you are thinking about the process and if it could be that uh um you are taking department by department and in like suggestion and kind of like hmm in rolling basis, not just wait for the whole workforce analysis to to end to start moving into uh some of the recommendations.
Um, I will defer to Rebecca on that because we just have a timeline for Rebecca, but I think how she deploys is different.
Sure, happy to address that. Um, yes, Councilmember, um, we have a, we we propose to do everything the entire project within about a five month period. Um, we would have concurrent um department reviews going on at the same time. So we would be looking at multiple departments at the same time with different groups of of staff, our of our staff and your staff. Um, and our proposal was to end up with a single report at the end of that five month period. That was what we had proposed.
Okay, thank you. And I will finish with saying that uh in some parts uh the state audit pointed out that we missed opportunities or we didn't do A, B, and C because the lack of staffing. Um, so I think it's 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 just um thinking about a a better way to approach that than just say we are going to eliminate staffing. I think is this is not what uh I hope this the city council as a whole is is hoping to get out of this workforce analysis, but a more uh concise and um recommendation about how we are going to improve services uh in many areas um. And also that helps to move the priorities that city council is working on. Um, we hope we we have a a finished priority soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and a a final message to the state auditor. Uh, we are moving forward on all of your recommendations. It may be taking us time, but it's taking its time because we want to make sure we do it right and not do it over and over and over again. So uh have patience with us. It will get done and it will get done correctly. So.
Can I make a, oh, it, sorry, it's not.
Uh, uh, are there public comments?
We have no public speakers.
No public speakers? All right.
The time, can I make a motion to move the item?
Yes.
I'd like to make like to make a motion to move the item with the addition of the inclusion of division heads um as a um interviewed group of 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 people. If we can add that to the um to the scope of work, I think that would do everyone, that would make it a stronger analysis.
I second that.
May I ask clarifying question? Sounds all right. Because if we're gonna if we're gonna add additional uh duties, and I totally agree, I just want to make sure that the contract amount reflects that as well, that we're not just all of a sudden adding something and it's not what we agreed to pay.
As far as I can see, there has been no request to increase the contract, but I will ask Rebecca since she is on the line.
Uh, to be honest, we would have to look further. I don't know how many people that is of division directors. I'm not sure how many you have in the city. We we typically, I mean, we don't just interview the directors. We interview key staff throughout each department and area. So I would hope that they're included. I can't guarantee all of them are included in our scope as is. So if you wanted all of them interviewed, we may need to look at an increase.
Maybe with.
So I I think that I'm looking for um not just the senior staff um but also key key staff. And you know, how that how that has implications for the budget, we can figure that out. Um.
If Mayor.
Yes.
If um the way the the motion was worded, what the normal process would be is that if we did need to add additional funds to the contract to accomplish uh the motion, then we would come back with a contract amendment.
Yeah.
But we would move forward um.
Yeah. It's an important item. I'd really like to move it forward with the addition of making sure to interview key staff who are not senior staff, the the ones that I keep forgetting. So this is not my night for remembering things.
So a motion by Robinson and the premature second by Mr. Willis, Councilmember Willis. Yes, and subsequently seconded by Jimenez. So uh can we have a roll call?
Yes.
Mayor, so can I just clarify with the inclusion of division directors is what I understood?
Yes.
Division directors.
Okay. Councilmember Bana.
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Zapata.
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Our next item is item S like Sam four.
Uh, yes, you may.
And that item is to discuss and appropriate funding from the general fund in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars and from the fire trail access fund in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars for the design and management of the Hilltop Green Emergency Evacuation Road.
Thank you. Can we have this slides, please? Um, I would like to start with a correction that actually the amount we are asking for is seventy thousand dollars. Uh, there was a confusion because we wanted to bring this item to agenda quickly and I apologize for that. Uh, if you can start with the slide number one. Um. Thank you. So we are asking for a budget for public emergency exit route for the Hilltop Green community. It's a collaboration between the city of Richmond and Contra Costa County Measure X facilitated by West Contra Costa Fire Safety Council. Next, please. Uh, the area we're talking about uh where we do emergency exit routes, all of them are within the very high fire hazard area. And I just wanted to note that the red and also parallel red lines are both very high, but from different maps um uh here. Thank you. Next slide. So we already had one emergency exit route in another area, didn't have anything to do with the city of Richmond. It was between the city of Pinole and El Sobrante unincorporated area. Next slide, please. Um, two communities didn't have uh emergency exit routes by connect, and as you see, it was blocked by connecting them together, both of them now have emergency exit routes. Next image. I'm sorry, I don't have a picture of the successfully done project, but it has been done. Um, what we are requesting is uh continue collaboration with Measure X at the county level for a public emergency exit for connecting community of Hilltop Green to Pinole Shopping Center. Next, please. So this uh blue line shows the entire community of Hilltop Green. The red mark at the bottom shows their only way in and out. There was a fire, I believe it was last year, and the entire community was trapped inside for two hours. So you can imagine why they need an emergency exit route. If you look at the very top, you see a um green line that shows where we are proposing an emergency exit route to Pinole Shopping Center. So the this entire community is in the city of Richmond. Pinole Shopping Center is in Pinole. Next, please. Uh, this is an aerial image of the area. Next, please. So that's the green line where we are proposing. Uh, the yellow is encircling a concrete wall that needs to be removed. And there is a small blue line that shows a metal bar in place. Next, please. A barrier. Uh, as you see, there is a walking path for the community that go to shopping center, but no vehicles can cross. The concrete wall is covered by a green vegetation. Next, please. Uh, so the yellow line again is a concrete wall. Uh, the green is where we would like to make it accessible. Next, please. Uh, we uh had a visit to the area with uh Chief Montoya of Richmond Fire Department and Chief Wain Cooper of the Pinole Fire Department before he retired and before Pinole Fire Department became a part of Contra Costa Fire Department with some residents, including the president and active members of the community. This is the point behind them is Richmond. Uh, the I'm standing when I took this picture at Pinole Shopping Center. Next, please. So this is a barrier uh right now in front of it. Uh, at the distance, you see the building in the Pinole Shopping Center and green vegetation is covering concrete wall. Next, please. And this is Pinole Shopping Center. Next, please. It's behind the um actually stores. Next, please. Another image of the same area. We also had Chief Ed Ore from Cal Fire visit the area. And he also emphasized, yeah, there is a need. Next, please. This is a permission from HOA that was provided consent of the residents that they would like to do that. The property uh belongs to the HOA. Next image, please. So we also need permission from property owners and we are working, our city manager is working with Pinole City Manager Andrew Murray to obtain that. Next, please. This is an estimate that later was uh corrected and Danielle can explain. But a rough, it it was originally a rough estimate when we negotiated with uh Chief Bachman at Contra Costa Fire uh Provincial District. It was around hundred sixty thousand. Then um Deputy Fire Marshal Munson suggested that actually there is more work to do to make sure fire engines can pass um safely because it's an emergency exit for the community and also fire engines in case need to be able to enter the community. Next slide, please. So the total cost according to Public Works is two hundred thirty thousand dollars. Measure X, when we suggest the projects to them, they they usually take most of it, but they ask the entity like the city to take a portion of it and they expect the design and management that is done by city engineers to be absorbed by the city. And that comes up to seventy thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So the this is a collaboration project, second collaboration project. We are asking the city council to please approve that seventy thousand dollars and we hope to have future collaboration projects and infrastructure with Measure X and we'll be happy to answer any questions. And I believe Chief, I mean Deputy Fire Marshal Munson is also on Zoom to answer questions if needed.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. One is just to say that it's good to to see the proactive work on making sure that people have safe um uh exit routes. Um, couple of questions. One, would our Public Works Department be the ones that are making these road improvements or would it go out to?
Uh, I let Daniel uh talk about it because we've been discussing it. Um.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez, city council members. Eh, Daniel Chorria, Polyworth Director, and with me, eh, Mr. Ken Chang, who's our Uh, Daniel Chorria, Polyworth Director and with me, Mr. Ken Chang, who's one of our senior engineers. Uh, yes, the pub, uh, public works will be leading this work. Uh, the seventy thousand dollars that uh, is being requested here for the design and construction management of this project. The design, we will, we will hire a consultant to help us with this location. We have a preliminary uh, design. There are some many factors involved. Uh, the, the, there's a wooden pole that belongs to PG&E. There's a a high voltage vol, uh, box that we, we need to analyze. There's a sewer line that is underneath where the, the proposed uh, roadway will be. So there are many factors. We have to remove a wall as a, a council member, Matt, I mentioned. There's also a consideration about the radius. I mean, we have to make sure that a fire truck can make that turn. And for that, it may, may require some elimination of a, a trash uh, enclosure that the, the, the shopping center has. So there's a lot of coordination that has to happen, but probably works would, would be the one uh, from the, from Richmond side leading the, 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 the design effort and construction in coordination with the fire department, of course.
What happens if the, if the shopping center doesn't want this?
We cannot proceed.
And then how, will there be any negative impact to the other kind of previously approved projects, priority projects and the kind of traffic calming and um, you know, you had, there's a bunch of, there's like a list of projects that were in motion. Um, I'm wondering what the impact on those projects, adding a new project would be.
Well, I, I cannot answer that question because it's a very broad one. I mean, it all depends what the city council decides to do and which projects are going to take priority. Seventy thousand dollars are definitely, you use it in one place, you cannot use it in another one.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a, I'm sorry, go, go ahead, Councilmember. Um, not sure who this question is for. Uh, but what if, so we're assuming Measure X will also provide some funding?
Yes, they're, they're probably, we are going to ask them for one hundred sixty thousand dollars.
So would it be safe to say that if that we're, this is sort of, we're, we're pending, if we were to approve the seventy thousand, we're pending it. If Measure X funds get approved, then this project moves forward. If they don't get approved, that seventy thousand dollars goes back into the bucket.
Yes.
To reallocate for some, and also if the shopping center doesn't want it. Uh, another question, um, and this is only for emergency purposes? It's not going to be during, because I shop there during the holidays.
Public emergency only.
Okay. Will Pinole be able to use that as a egress? So during the holiday seasons, they get really, really full. And also they have emergencies in, in the shopping center. So can they use it to?
The fire department will have access to it. They'll decide.
And the reason I'm asking is because if they're also going to be able to use it to help their residents, can they also help pitch in?
Uh, no, the, the city of Pinole said from the very beginning, they're not going to give us a penny. All they do is help us uh, work with property owners to get permits.
Okay. Um, that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Well, you actually asked my question, so.
You're welcome.
Do we have public comment?
One more question?
Yes, you may.
Just a quick question. How, how long of a, of a project is this? How, how long would it take to complete this work?
Well, definitely, well, first, once, if this is approved today, uh, the, this would have to be put into a capital improvement project, right? And after that, the selection of the consultant is, is going to happen. That would take maybe a couple of months to have a consultant secure and ready to go. Uh, the design may take uh, maybe can another month, something like that. So we would say that maybe in three months, we have a preliminary design, not to the nitty gritty, but enough that we can bring it to uh, the shopping center, the, the HOA, the fire department, all the party, the parties involved uh, to get consensus. Uh, at that moment, you tweak uh, the cost estimate because that's when you have all the details. And at that moment is when we know, okay, we are at, at our budget or we need, we need less, we need more.
Can I ask one, one more question? The seventy thousand, it, it seems like that maybe is that, is that the amount that you would need to cover city staff time to do that kind of pre-construction prep work?
It's more to cover consultants' time. Uh, more than city time, city staff time.
Hmm. So it's not covering city staff time? That would be covered in the regular budget?
No.
Hmm. I guess I'm, I'm trying to ask, like, with construction projects, usually you need to get it through the pre-construction so you understand what the design is and you can, you know, you get a real estimate and everything. And I'm wondering what the amount of money we need to get to that point where we have a clear picture of the project. Um, and have a, a solid kind of S, but a construction estimate. Like what, is that the seventy thousand or is that more than that?
I, I believe there's a twenty percent contingency.
Yeah, but once we this is the very preliminary stages of the project, right? But we, we visited the area, we took into account everything that we saw. So far, there's some unforeseen conditions. Some, sometimes we, we, we don't see at this stage during the design uh, phases when uh, the designer goes and, and take into account every single detail. So as I said, if uh, seventy thousand dollars would take us to that point where we know all the details about the project. And uh, and uh, maybe the cost is way less than a hundred and sixty after that. Uh, it, maybe it's a little bit more. As I said, there's some other factors, right? And just to give an idea, if we need to relocate a wooden pole from PG&E, that's a, a third party that the timing of the construction, it would be affected by that.
Hmm. And the project absolutely can't happen if the shopping center won't agree? Or is there a way to compel the shopping center to allow it?
Uh, that, well, that's more a legal question, but definitely that, the, the exit or the emergency uh, access leads to a private property, right? And uh, if they don't agree, I mean, we cannot, we cannot.
Can I, can I ask a legal kind of advice or opinion on this? So it seems like we might, we could get ourselves into the situation where we're investing so at least seventy thousand dollars in a project before we know if we're going to have access to that, to that additional property. And I wonder if there's some other way to legally compel the shopping center to, you know, allow us to make this emergency road or if we are dependent upon them agreeing.
So certainly we could ask for an easement or a license agreement. Uh, the more binding the document is, one suspects the less likely the shopping center would be to approve it. Uh, but you could certainly uh, talk about whether uh, they would grant some sort of an easement across the property or at least a license agreement to allow the emergency access, but a license agreement is revocable. So it's not something permanent. So I think that the, the type of instrument could be discussed with the shopping center. But um, the, the only way to compel would be to do some sort of eminent domain action and that that's a difficult process to go through, especially when it's extraterritorial.
Uh, it's, it's my understanding that the seventy thousand would be held until we had agreements.
Correct.
Uh, also, we're going to say not to exceed seventy thousand, up to seventy thousand. That's how Measure X does it too. That their check would say not to exceed like hundred sixty thousand.
Right. So, so seventy thousand would be held until we had agreement with the shopping center and we knew that the Measure X monies were coming.
Yes.
Okay.
If, if you don't have all the permits, we're not going to start.
Right. Uh, Councilmember Jimenez had her hand up and then you.
Uh, no, I think um, you answered my questions about process. So we don't, like, I, I just wanted to get clear. We don't have Measure X funds right now. We don't have uh, Pinole more uh, approval. Um, so this is a really pre, pre, preliminary stages. Um, uh, so I just wanted to make sure that I understood um, or where we are right now. And is there any other thing that we is uh, is missing that it needs to happen uh, in this process, uh, more than the, the money? Um, so the project actually could be, could start? There is no name here. Environmental review or, or something like that?
Yeah, definitely. We, we would have to go through that process during the design phase. Uh, but at this point, I would say the two important elements are to um, have a preliminary discussion with uh, the shopping center and have a, a, at least their consent to explore this, I mean, that their, their, their willingness, right? Uh, I don't know if that, probably that's already happening, but the other part is to um, to have a detailed design to have uh, all the costs more to the um, with more details to, to, to have.
Yeah. And uh, my following question is about, we are going to be uh, discussing the capital improvement budget, the draft. Uh, uh, what will be the impact um, on the like, on the, on what you are already talking here? Like what will be some?
We are including this work as one of our pro, the projects, right, that were presented to city council. Uh, as many projects as we have received from different city council members, we'd include it there. Uh, and if we're missing anything, that tonight is the time to hear that. By the way, we, we make sure that uh, this is a, that we're going to present tonight is a draft. So uh, but this project specifically, we're including it in the presentation. So it's not separate. It's, everything is together.
Will it be, uh, will, what will be your recommendation in terms of being prudent in terms of like, we don't have the, all the permits that is needed? Uh, what will be your recommendation for, for?
If I may answer that question, so we're.
I am asking the public work director.
I'm sorry?
I am asking the public work director since he is the one who knows how this is going to be. I know that you want it, but I just want.
Can I explain my side and?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. You can, uh, then I will. Yeah, we've been in, uh, we've been working it uh, for a long time, more than a year with uh, Chief Bachman, who is in charge of Measure X funds uh, for wildfire safety. And we finally, we're getting to the point that our public works, actually we have public works director can give us an estimate. We're doing it. The good thing about it, about this opportunity is that they do have the budget this fiscal year. We are trying to tap into it. Otherwise, the whole budget uh, would need to come out of the city of Richmond's budget, the entire two hundred thirty thousand dollars. That's one of the reasons we would like to get it approved. Uh, so we can tap into uh, Measure X funds. Also, you may know that the city of Pinole uh, decided that their fire department would be run by Contra Costa Fire Protection District, which is also the same entity that runs Measure X. And they are on our side and we've been in contact with their mayor, some city council members and also their um, city manager who has done a similar project. And we are optimistic that this will happen. This will go through. As we're doing it, the city manager is working on the permit.
Thank you. Um.
Your side.
Yes.
Yes, uh, as I mentioned, the two key elements at this point is to uh, have the conversation with the shopping center. As I mentioned, one of the elements in the design is the turning radius, uh, especially for the fire trucks. And uh, we preliminary uh, uh, considerations show that we may have to relocate either a wood, a wooden pole or a, a threat, a trash enclosure or both. Uh, to make sure that there, there's enough room for this turning radius. But uh, as I said, that, that's preliminary design. And so we, just to give you an example, if we relocate a wooden pole, PG&E, if, if it's the owner of that pole, they would have to be involved in that. It affects the timing. Or if we need to relocate a trash enclosure, the shopping center has the last say on that. It's their trash enclosure. So uh, uh, there's a lot of coordination there. So if my, my suggestion is uh, we, it, it's advisable to have this design prepared first. Uh, 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 at the same time that we are uh, in the conversation with the shopping uh, center is so we can coordinate what's the best design that uh, resolves or solves the, the, then the need for this emergency access and also the need from the property owner on the other side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, may I add that we are working closely with Richmond Fire Department? And every project you're proposing actually is absolutely critical for the community. We have Deputy Fire Marshal Munson here. If um, we can allow him to talk in support of the project?
I, uh, uh, I, I think you, you sold us.
Okay.
Right. But um, uh, I'd like to have a public comment before, okay? Do we have public comment?
Yes, we do have one speaker in person. On if there are any speakers um, that are joining us by Zoom that would like to address the council on this side, please raise your hand at this time. The speaker in person is Jane Dean McGilpin. You'll have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to this important issue. In March of twenty twenty-two, Hilltop Green was designated by the Fire Marshal as a high severity fire risk area. When the neighborhood of Hilltop Green was being developed a long time ago in the sixties and seventies, there was little to no concern given to wildfire ru, risk. And a single drive in and out added to the charm of the neighborhood. The severity of wildfires throughout the Bay Area in the last number of years has proven that we must address the risk to lives by the lack of an emergency evacuation road. Recently, Park Central, the lone exit of Hilltop Green was impassable. Once due to a brush fire that jumped Hilltop Drive and another due to a large fallen tree. That single exit puts our lives at risk. More than fourteen hundred lives dwell in Richmond's Hilltop Green development. And nearly fifty percent of the neighborhood's residents may be considered even more vulnerable as they are either dependent children or the elderly. What is the value of these more than one thousand four hundred lives to this council? Please find the money in the city budget to allocate the requested seventy thousand dollars for the important work of design and management of the emergency evacuation road for Hilltop Green. Thank you especially to Councilmember Bana for all of your work on this and also you gentlemen. Thank you.
There are no more speakers.
All right, uh, Councilmember Robinson.
So um, I really want to support this initiative. I think it's really important that we have safe exits, especially when you see a community that has only one way in and out for so many people. And I'm getting increasingly concerned about the way that we bring um, to council, a kind of one project at a time, asking for funds in a kind of an uncoordinated way that lacks process. Um, I want to move forward tonight on this issue, but I would request that instead of bringing individual projects, one by one, that we actually put together a fire safety plan that identifies all of the projects in that plan and put that in the capital improvement budget, even as an unfunded item with all the different like projects so that we can understand it as a whole and plan for it and not have it kind of be, you know, one offs. I think that that's not really good process for managing um, public funds. Um, and on that note, I'd really like us to see, you know, there are a lot of ifs um, in this project so far, ifs that I hope we are able to, you know, kind of get over, but I think that these funds should really not be used until there is explicit written permission from the property owner. Um, and that they would be willing to do things like move the enclosure if necessary. Um, if we, I think we need those kinds of things in writing, so we don't spend seventy thousand dollars of public money and then are unable to move the project forward beyond that point because they're unwilling to move the enclosure or they're unwilling to allow access to the property. Um, so if, if we can have those conditions on the funds, I'd be happy to approve them and they just request that going forward, let's put a full fire safety plan together and have that included in the capital um, improvement plan budget.
The reason, if I may respond?
If I may check for you. Uh, and, and I would also like to include uh, uh, having the Measure X funds approved before we move forward. Go ahead.
Uh, the reason why this is coming to you now is that I learned from Chief Bachman that we can tap into Measure X funds in this fiscal year. That's why we. That's why we would like to get it. Next year, you know, it's going to be way more competitive. Right now, there's some money, we should use it as soon as possible.
Done, so can.
So do we have a motion? Go ahead.
So it's concerning if the shopping center says no to us, can we find an alternate route? So that we can start working on it. If the shopping center says no, we still have to be able to help the community. I don't know where it is, but can there's something else there? So that's one question. So we're going to put money, like, I just don't want us to get to somewhere and they say no, and they say, okay, well, that's it. We now know that there's an issue. We now have to figure out how to resolve it if this doesn't move forward with the shopping center, so.
We would need to start from the beginning, and that's why we're saying up to 70,000. So if things don't go forward, we spend zero. If things, you know, get through and Measure X would not allow us without permit. So they're more strict than we are.
Yeah, no, it's beyond the amount.
Well, I want to say that your question would be answered with Doria's proposition of having a complete fire safety program for the entire city, so.
Yeah, yes. The other, for the CCNRs and the HOA, I'm just, it's an older HOA, so I can see where maybe they CCNRs didn't have it, but have we read them to make sure they don't have something already in there? Looks like that property has been made vacant on purpose as a, some kind of exit. So the CCNRs say that that is already a fire exit? Because it looks from the picture, there's a vacant lot, and it looks like it's got the little pathway.
Just happens to be there. There is another one, we thought this is the most convenient one.
Okay, and the HOA, also that's the HOA's jurisdiction. Just want to make sure, where does a city come in when it's their jurisdiction? Right, are we coming in into HOA? Because that's their dues, that's their everything, they're going to have to maintain it, are we going to maintain the road? Are they going to increase their fees, et cetera? I saw the letter that you popped up here, just want to make sure that the HOA, where does the HOA and the city align?
I assume it's going to be a fire access lane, the city will maintain it, but like any other fire access.
Are we ready for a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve these with the conditions that Councilmember Robinson is adding. So we know that if there is no permits or all the things that needs to happen, like a Measure X funds to be committed, that we won't spend that money. And it also added that we will need a fire plan to be on the capital improvement, but, but plan, even if it's unfunded.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jimenez and a second by Councilmember Zapata.
Councilmember Bana?
Yes, and thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGloughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zapata?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous. Our next item is item Q1. And it's to receive the fiscal year 2022, 2023, quarter three budget report for this period of July 1, 2022 through March 31 of 2023. Adopt a resolution to appropriate 15 million for the main library upgrades project via a transfer and from the general fund to the capital fund. Receive a report regarding the city's American Rescue Plan Act. City needs assessment and strategic investment plan and appropriate 1 million in ARPA funds to complete the 13th Complete Street project. Now, this item is for council deliberation only. The item was presented, the city council received the reports, and public comment was received at the May 16, 2023 city council meeting. The council voted unanimously to bring the issue of the allocation of funds back to the council after the May 22, 2023 retreat.
Mayor, would you like to receive a brief presentation?
I'm sorry, could you?
Said Mayor, would you like to receive a brief presentation from staff regarding this item? Mayor, would you like to receive a brief presentation from staff regarding this item?
Yes.
Okay.
That I understood.
Oh, okay. KCRT, can you kindly put up the slide deck? And can we go ahead and go to slide two and then three? Slide three, please? With that, I will turn it over to Mubin. It's 8:30, so we're going to be very succinct.
Thank you so much, City Manager. This is Mubin Carter, and good evening, council, and. All right, may I take off my mask? All right, thank you so much. So good evening, Mayor and the council members. This is Mubin Carter, Deputy Director of Finance, City of Richmond, as you know. And I will be going over a few technical definitions of the financial systems or governmental accounting that we refer to a lot and could be a little confusing at times. So one of the terms that we use is unspent funds. Unspent funds are technically appropriations that are not realized or are not expended in any budget year or any fiscal year. An example would be, for example, as you see an image here on the, on the presentation is like, you know, for example, the city appropriated in salaries and wages about $75 million in that category, that was the appropriation, but however, the actual turnout to be about 70 million in that fiscal year. So the unspent funds would be about $5 million, so that's the, that category. And then there is the excess, another terminology that we use. The term excess is really as literal as it sounds. It's technically an amount that's exceeding to what it's being compared to. For example, it could be an access revenue, an access expenditure compared to the budget or an access revenue, exceeding revenue to the expenditures. So in this example, I'm using property taxes. As you see, that the city budgeted about $45 million in that example year, and the actuals turn out to be 47, $47 million. So in that situation, the revenues were like 2.1 million dollars in access to the budgeted amount. So and also, access could also be interchangeably used with the surplus. That's the next category that I'll be talking about. The surplus is actually technically, there is actual technical definition. A surplus is the residual amount of resources remaining after a period of usage. So in cities' financial, financials, the example would be at the end of the fiscal year, when the city had like revenues of like 203 million dollars and the expenditures were 183 million dollars. So the surplus is 19.9 million dollars. That means like, you know, the revenues were left over or in surplus of the expenditures by about 19 million dollars, so like at the end of the fiscal year. So like, at the, at the same time, you could also say like, the revenues were like 19.9 million dollars in access to the expenditure. So like, I mean, there could be times when, you know, we would have used the term excess versus surplus, but they go hand in hand and then could be confusing too. So just to sort of like, you know, give a little bit of explanation in that area. And then there's reserve. Reserve is a fund balance that is an assigned fund balance, meaning it's not appropriated for any use or purpose. So that is an unassigned cash balance that is on the balance sheet side. Now, you know, we'll go into the definition of balance sheet on another day, not today. But we can come back to explain what the balance sheet is. However, this is the part of the fund balance that is unassigned, that is not allocated or reserved for any expenditures or any scope or any like, you know, project that is unassigned fund balance, and it's also known as reserve. So that would be my part, and now we are talking about, I'll hand over to Joseph Muniz for this slide. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez and council members. My name is Joseph Munoz, the Capital Projects Manager. Here's a project timeline for 13th Complete Street. The project started in 2019, and as you can see, we are now in the middle of 2023 and approaching 90% design. We identified that there was a funding gap based off of the 90% PSNE, the planned specs and estimate. And from there, we basically started to work and identified that there was a million dollars from the ARPA Community Beautification Project that was already appropriated for that, that needed to identify a project that fits that project scope. So with that, we basically are seeking to continue this in 2023 so that we can advance into the right of way phase. And from there, we'll go to the bid award phase in 2024 and commence with construction from 2024 through early 2025. This project essentially encourages multiple modes of transportation and supports future growth and active living. It's actually a connection between Richmond's Yellow Brick Road project and will basically fill the gap into San Pablo's Rumreal Boulevard Complete Streets project that is currently in construction now.
Thank you, Joseph. So my name is LaShonda White, Deputy, Deputy City Manager for Community Services, and wanted to share a little bit more about the Richmond Main Library Infrastructure Project. Before I do that, I would like to thank Christopher Larson, our administrative librarian, he is in the audience. He is the staff person that actually found the grant and has been working really hard on it, so I just want to thank him for all of his, his work so far and all of his continued work, as well as all city staff from the library who have been, who are extremely excited about the potential for an upgraded library. So the Richmond Library was constructed in 1948. And I think it's important, we said last year, or last week, that it maintains much of its original mid-century modern character. It's a very nice way to put that it is historic. It has not received the maintenance upgrades necessary to meet modern needs. The building has its original outdated mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, and the finishes are in poor condition. And so the reason why we went after the grant is to provide some funding to help the City of Richmond upgrade the library around critical maintenance, critical accessibility, and life safety. That is the purpose of this 15 million, the 10 million dollar grant. So here, we received, the top grant award was 10 million. And so we almost received the top award amount of 9.7. It required a 50% match of approximately 4.8 million. 4.1, the city council has graciously allowed ARPA funds to be used to provide support to that match. And then the remaining 700,000 came from the Library Impact Fee Fund. So listed here, high level are the types of projects that are funded by that 15 million dollars. You can see, it really is structure, infrastructure backbone of the library system. So it's lights, electrical power upgrades that are needed to even have a functioning HVAC system in the building. The windows are original, some don't open and close. So window replacement, flooring and adhesive replacement, acoustic ceiling replacement. We need lots of seismic upgrades, and this 15 million isn't even going to get us full upgrades for seismic, around seismic needs. We need a fire alarm, automatic sprinkler system, which this building does not have. We need some work done on our entrance. If you come in right now, you can't see all the way through, you have to kind of go through these two double doors, we want to hopefully change that. Our shelving isn't braced the way that it should be. We do need to do some critical upgrades to our restrooms and our elevator. And there's books on the second floor where people, there's stacks up there. And our elevator is in the back of the building where you have to go through staff area if you need to get up there. And a lot of staff won't take the elevator because it's original. And so it's not extremely safe, and so they will, I heard they will put the cart with books up, push it to go up, take the steps and meet the elevator on the second floor. So there are just really basic fundamental needs of this library, and this 15 million dollars is going to help us get there, but it's not even going to get us there all the way. And so the additional request for 15 million is going to help us vision what the library could really look like and have it be a top-notch library, which is a desire of staff and community and city council, I believe, and it really is important. And I think our community deserves it. So we've worked really closely with Public Works, excited to have engineers on staff so they could help us think about this work. And so what you see here is a high-level timeline. We received the grant award in 2022. We are right now trying to work with Public Works to, in engineering, to develop a request for proposal to get a design team on board to help us do this work. It'll be great to know if we have 15 or if we have 30 million dollars, so we can have an understanding of what we're doing. Without the additional funds, you see what we're going to be able to do, and we hope that we can do all of that that is required in the grant, considering construction costs and interest rates are increasing. But in addition to that, with this additional funding, we really will be able to have community outreach. There's really no conversation with the infrastructure grant that we have right now because we need to put an HVAC system in and we need to have new lighting in. But if we have additional funds, we can really work with the community, with the council, with staff to say, what spaces do we want in the library? How do we move walls around? How do we create space so we can have programming to meet the needs of our community? We can have maker spaces and study hall spaces, more community space other than just the Little C Room. So really excited about the opportunity to have that extra funding to do the work that's needed. And this timeline shows you the various high-level steps, and that construction would go out to beginning of 2027. With that, if it's okay, I will, I will continue and bring it on home. So the recommended action, the recommended action as read to you by our fabulous city clerk is to receive the report and to read, two reports, which you already received last time. But the parts that we really are hoping for action tonight are around adopting a resolution to appropriate 15 million from the current year budget to support and match the 15 million we already have to upgrade the Richmond Library, and then also to allow for the million dollars that was already allocated in the American Rescue Plan for Community Beautification that wasn't for an identified project, to actually be appropriated to use to complete the 13th Street Complete Street project. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I see Councilmember Zapata, then Councilmember Bana. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation, thank you so much, both of you there or all three of you, you all worked on it. Are we also upgrading the community room right next door to it?
With the extra 15 million, yes.
So the answer is yes, perfect, as that room gets hot in the summer. And then moving in regards to the funds, these, the line item there had payroll, so I'm assuming those are employees that we did not hire, therefore we didn't have to pay them.
That would be true, but then the focus is not the numbers in this presentation. That's just an example. That year has closed, been discussed, been presented, so let's not go into the, you know, what the, the numbers are there. This is just an example, but in that case, yes, it would be. Or it would be, yeah, that's, that's what it would be.
Perfect. If it was an example, I won't go into the details of it, then that's it. I just want to make sure the community rooms is part of that mix because definitely needs the AC. Thank you.
Councilmember Bana?
Thank you. My questions are always quick. So the trees on that image for 13th Street, are they going to happen or they're just decorative on the image?
The trees will happen if we can get the one. The trees will happen if we can get the one million dollars transfer.
Excellent.
The trees will happen if we can get the one million dollar transfer.
Thank you.
So my question has, is around the thirteenth street um, project. Is there uh, some, an urgent issue that's pushing the need for them funds right now? And if so, what is it?
Yeah, so this is a grant-funded project, everyone's favorites, I know. And so we are working closely with Caltrans to ensure we meet the reporting deadlines and one of the key parts is ensure that it's fully funded. And so when, you know, we came on board, we've discovered as we worked with our consultants that there was a funding gap. And so working with the various departments here, we identified that there was a source possibly that we are hoping council can consider to help uh, close the gap.
And a question for um, finance. What was the total amount of whatever the appropriate word, excess funds in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget? Currently identified.
Currently identified, it was approximately sixteen million dollars of that, just to be on the safe side and just to be conservative. We are, the staff is only recommending to uh, allocate fifteen million of that out to general capital to work, to, to fund the remaining uh, for the library renovation.
Mm-hmm. And then to keep one, one million.
Will continue to review and analyze the numbers as the year moves, moves along. So the council will have an option to decide on uh, whatever the balance is at the end of the year to uh, uh, make decision about that.
So by the end of the year, do you mean June thirtieth?
Uh, well, June thirtieth is actually technically um, the end of the fiscal year, but it takes a couple of months after that for us to basically close the books and, you know, make sure all the accounting is done, all the invoices are paid and all the revenues are received. So you will receive a year-end report around September, October.
So around September, October. So um, this is a, a question that's kind of um, I have concerns about continually whittling away at the ARPA funds. And I'm wondering if it might be a better process to use excess funds at this time. Maybe allocating fourteen million to the library and one million to from the excess funds to this project. And then when we find out how much the actual excess is left over in September, October, we can allocate the remaining to the library. Um, so that we can have a good, solid process that includes all the great information we gained from the ARPA um, um, assessment and use those ARPA funds in a concerted thoughtful way.
If, if I may, um, may I ask? Um, the council previously allocated one million dollars uh, towards uh, street work. Um, and so that's why staff was suggesting a specific project to allocate it for. So um, previously there was an attachment five that was refer, that was referenced from the last meeting. Um, but if the council would, um, because it was essentially un, it was undesignedated.
So this allocation of ARPA funds is not a new allocation of our funds? It's taking an existing allocation and saying we want to direct it to this specific project. So we're not decreasing that amount that we had, like it was twenty-seven and then it was seventeen, but last time I saw it, it was like ten.
Wait, it was, it was uh, around eleven and then it went back up. So it's about fifteen now.
So we would still have fifteen. This wouldn't make it fourteen.
No, it would not decrease it. So as, as the city manager stated, sorry, Joseph. Um, this, you already, the city council already approved a one million dollar allocation. But it just said community beautification and there was, there was no specific project attached to it and Public Works at the time had not come up with a project. And so now we are saying, here's a project for that one million. It does not change the current remaining funds. And then with regards to the library, um, the council has already allocated that four point one out of ARPA. So.
I know that. Yeah, I understand that and that's fine. I just, I, I feel like I keep seeing that ARPA funds like little this, this little, this little and it gets getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And we haven't had a process to determine what we should use it on and I'm, I'm afraid we're gonna be left with like two dollars, you know?
No, we, we understand your concerns, but the last meeting we, where we were happy to report it went up four million because um, we unfortunately didn't have a decrease in revenue. Um, and the amount that we noted thus far, and as we as staff has time to continue to analyze information that we're receiving, um, we will bring additional updates to city council, but the amount that we had when this report was published was uh, last week was sixteen point two million. And so we were suggesting that of that at a minimum sixteen point two, but we're gonna think, we think it's gonna be in excess of sixteen point two of um, of funding that the council could redeploy. We were suggesting that fifteen million could be, if desired by the council, redeployed towards uh, the library.
Thank you for the clarifications. It's helpful.
Yeah, I, I'd like to uh, mention that uh, one of the issues that council has in allocating money is that we aren't given the full picture of our finances. For instance, if we hadn't known that we had this much excess funds, we might have moved the money from the excess funds as opposed from the ARPA funds. So I, I think that's one of the concerns that council member uh, Robinson had, which is, which is, you know, uh, which bucket uh, these finances come from and whether or not the buckets that we take the money from actually uh, is applied to the concerns that the money was originally designed for.
Thank you.
Uh, council member Robinson.
Just to make one additional, I don't know if this is time for comments, actually. Is this not the time for comments?
No, let, let, let's, let's see if we have a, uh, do we, no public speakers, then it is the time for comments.
One last, one last comment and kind of adding to the concerns and I, I, I think it's important for staff to just know this, it's on my mind is that, you know, I am so happy to have a more complete vision of the capital um, improvement projects list that, you know, it, as we get that list more complete, more, we can see clearly where there's unfunded, where there's gaps. And so to see that there's a twenty-two million dollar gap, um, it, it, it's really helpful to know that. Um, so that we're, as we're kind of allocating to this little project now, a little project, another project, it'd be nice to know that we have these priorities of capital improvements that maybe some of that money needs to go to so that the assets the city has are well taken care of. Um, and that is a real concern of mine as I see, you know, the things that I grew up in, in the city and love so much just crumbling. Um, we really need to get our priorities together. Um, and so having a complete capital improvement plan is just so important. So we are allocating money in a, in a really responsible way. Um, end comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I think I, I am going to um, just say that um, I think this uh, project uh, of the library is a, is a good project. I, I, I think like my comments uh, last time were more about how financially responsible we are. So I just wanted to hear from you um, eh, how, like, how um, are these uh, funds? Um, like, what is the reassurance that you can give us in terms of like making the decision today to reallocate this fund uh, with the near-future uh, forecasting that we are going to uh, be looking at?
Um, I guess I'm, I'm, I think I I'm not quite clear about the question. Would you please repeat it?
Yeah, so I think like for me is that uh, staff is recommending and this is really exciting uh, to have uh, a project like the library uh, to be uh, finished and redone. Staff is recommending to, in addition to the five million dollar that we are putting to add fifteen million dollars. So it's a total of twenty million dollar. How comfortable uh, you feel about uh, this recommendation in, in the in, in the sense of um, the forecasting and the uh, or the needs that we have in the city?
I'm still not clear on what the question is. I think this is a policy decision. We're saying that the funds are available. And so how they're appropriated, we defer to council on, on how to best do that.
Look, I, I think, I think I can uh, restate her question. Her question basically is, do you feel that this is a fiscally responsible allocation?
Can you put the slide deck back up that shows the project timeline and the process for a capital project? So what I think is important for the council to note is that we're suggesting you make an allocation that goes into the CIP. The CIP budget for the city of Richmond is a five-year budget. So as you continue to move forward in the current fiscal year and you approve the next fiscal year budget, if all of a sudden there's a major plasmic event and the city council wanted to move in a different direction, you're entitled to do so. We haven't finalized the design. We haven't started construction. And so this is a recommendation based on the information we have today that we feel comfortable that you can proceed with this project if you deem it appropriate. Or if you'd want to do something else, we're happy to do that as well.
Um, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, uh, council member, oh, Mayor Martinez for edit, like, to help me with the question. Uh, I just, I think like for me is this is really exciting. I just want to make sure that uh, the, the vote or the decision that we are making because, yes, it's a policy decision based on recommendation by a staff and the city manager based on your knowledge of uh, the finances in the city. So I, I feel like uh, what I am hearing from you is a reassurance that uh, it's okay to put these fifty million dollars because eh, at this moment, and at this moment, I am not saying today, but what you foresee in the, in, in the near future, it's okay for us uh, to put these eh, eh, these funds and allocate this fund and yeah, celebrate that we are going to have a a new library, that we are going to hopefully have a community process that everybody envisioned. And that in two months, we are not talking about um, a, a deficit. So I am feeling really grateful uh, for that recommendation. It's a policy direction, but with a recommendation from the city manager and city staff that go ahead, we can put fifty million dollars into this and thank you for that.
Thank you. Council member Bana.
Thank you. I just wanna tell the city manager and city staff that I sincerely appreciate it. First of all, you come up with unspent money. Then you come up with a vision for the city of Richmond that shows you're not only responsible, not only caring, but are also very creative with how to spend the money. I really appreciate it. It's very heartwarming. Uh, you are the greatest assets the city has. Um, I'm very proud of you. Just wanna congratulate you. It's awesome. And I know our city manager um, is very financially conservative. So if you give it a go, um, that, that's a very good sign. I'm very excited about this public library. Um, it's gonna have a little market too, I hope. It's going to be a public shelter for the community. And it just improves not only the image of the city, but then uh, the array of services that will be available to the community. So I just wanna give you a heartfelt uh, gratitude and appreciation and everything. Thank you so much, everyone.
Council member Sopeda.
Thank you. Um, I wanna just make sure that we, we can bring some of the comments from last meeting uh, forward. Uh, we had a lot of really great comments. Uh, I, I made some in regards to making sure that we're leaving room for growth at the library site in case we wanna do other buildings around it. Um, making sure that uh, there was a lot of other really great comments made last time and I think wanna make sure if we make this motion now that it, that some of those get incorporated into it. And then also I wanna echo what councilor Bana just said about the accolades for you guys, but also thank you. Not remember the librarian's name. I'm so sorry. You're like, missed your last, your, your name. But I wanna thank you for going after and looking for the grants. Uh, thank you for that, always looking out for the community. It's teamwork. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Can, I just wanna, cause I don't, I wanna make sure I'm, I'm clear. There are a few things in the fifteen million dollar grant for the community room. Enhanced lighting, enhanced window repair, uh, replacement and enhanced ceilings. But we can, we're gonna do so much more with this extra money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
Now the old second.
There you go. Unanimous second. Is there not for a vote?
So I have a motion by councilmember Sopeda, a second by Vice Mayor McGlaughman.
That's good.
Okay, councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGlaughman?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmembers Sopeda?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you all too.
Next item.
Forget about the market.
The Willis markets.
Our next item is item Q two. And that item is to receive a report and provide direction regarding the draft five-year capital improvement plan fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four through fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
KCRT, can you please load up the slide deck? Thank you.
All of our team has to squeeze in here. Maybe we have to have two rows. Or we can remove the barrier and put another chair right there.
Daniel, do you wanna get started?
Yes. Good evening, uh, Mayor Martinez, city council members. My name is Daniel Chavaria, Public Works Director. And with me tonight, uh, I have a staff from Public Works Engineering Division and the Finance Department. Uh, on my right side, Joseph Munoz, our new capital projects manager, Mark Leiner, our new eh, engineering and infrastructure administrator. Wanna let Mubin?
All right, this is Mubin again, Deputy Director of Finance, and I have a senior budget analyst, Vernacia Ward, who is the capital improvements project uh, budget analyst.
And eh, very humble, I wanna say you have the fantastic five here.
Wait a minute, where's Avanish?
Eh, he's not joining us tonight.
Okay, but he's our new senior accountant in, in Public Works. And so he, it's really great that we now have an accountant in Public Works. So that's really gonna be hopeful. So we wanna acknowledge him too.
I've been in Shandan, our new senior accountant for eh, our Public Works Department.
We met him today, so it was great.
So eh, well, tonight we're gonna talk about our capital improvement program. This is a draft document, a presentation of information that we have collected and reconciled with the Fi, Finance Department. Eh, by no means this is a final document. So eh, if there's anything that you don't see in this document, we're eh, desperate to hear. So we can have a complete document for you in the next eh, couple of weeks. Next, please. The presentation, we're gonna talk about the seven different items. Eh, eh, we, thank you. Eh, we're gonna talk about or remind about the organizational priorities. Eh, we're gonna remind about the recommended action for, for this eh, 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 item. We're gonna talk about a typical timeline of capital improvement projects about, very quickly about grants, and then we're gonna go to a need degree of the capital improvement program status, give some examples about it, and finally, our plan. Next, please. Just a reminder, the organizational priorities, you see four different elements that take any a work data in our staff. Before I mention the four of them, I wanna say that regularly in any other agency, we'll be working on two of them mainly. The day-of-day operations and in council policy direction. Here we add the corrective action plan and also new council requests. Next, please. The recommended action for tonight in The recommended action for tonight, I'm just going to move something that is not letting me see. Well, okay. It is for the city council to receive the report and provide a direction regarding the draft five-year capital improvement plan. Next, please. A typical timeline of a capital improvement project contains the six elements that you see on the screen. Start with planning, then environmental phase, design phase, right-of-way phase, construction phase, and closeout. Usually, environmental phase, design phase, they overlap at the beginning of the design and design and right-of-way phase overlap at the end of the design. We spend a lot of time in a capital improvement projects in the first four elements, specifically in the planning phase, because that defines the scope of the project. So the construction phase, which is the one that everybody sees, is actually a very short period of time compared to the rest. And the closeout is something that we always forget and it takes time as well, especially when we have a lot of grants. It's not just completing the project, but it's also the reporting and the following up. For example, if you have to plant some trees and you have a grant and you have to report on the planting period, that's time that usually people don't see, but it takes energy and effort. And again, these phases are in a sequence, but sometimes we jump straight to the construction without going before to the previous element. And that's why it's so important for us to show that every element of this typical timeline is very important. Next, please. Talking specifically with the, to get a vendor on board, call it a consultant or a contractor, takes time. And in a typical process here in Richmond, we're talking about fourteen weeks. So when we talk about, for example, the Hilltop Green project, we want to bring a consultant on board, you're adding over three months just to get the consultant on board in this process. Similar happens with construction when we want to get a contractor. From the moment we bid the project to the moment we award the project and we have an executed contract, it could be easily three months. Next, please. One example is what Joseph already showed in the previous presentation, the Thirteenth Street Complete Street. You can see here all the elements or all the phases that we discussed before. In a project that the planning phase starting in 2019, environmental, starting in 2019 and then in 2021, and we're still in the design phase, at the end of the design phase. But you can see when you see construction phases, relatively short period of time compared to everything that happened previous. You can see some pictures of before and how it could look after. Next, please. Going specifically to grants, there is something that we want to bring up. It's not all grants are created equal. Sometimes you have grants that can fund a hundred percent of the project cost, while others require a local match. In the second category, if you have a grant that gives you one dollar and the city has to put five dollars for that, that's not a grant that we would like to pursue because it puts a lot of pressure on in our budget. Unless we have that local match secure, that grant should not be pursued at that specific time. Another element is when grants have a minimum level of reported and coordination versus grants that have a higher demand of coordination, reporting, and staff time. And the reason why that is important is that if we have priorities set up by city council and then we have a grant that comes up that is not really a part of the main priorities and it's going to take time away from the priorities we have, that's probably a grant that we should not be pursuing because it would take away or be a distraction if it's going to take a lot of staff time. And finally, another category of grants is grants that feed the timing of the project phase versus grants that are ahead of the timing of the project phase. For example, we might not have a scope defined for something and we're applying for a grant that is for construction, but we don't know exactly what we're doing. And then we go after that grant, we request the funds just to realize after we spent time in the planning and design phase that we were way short of what we actually needed. So sometimes grants that are ahead of time, ahead of the facing that where we are are not a good fit because it only gonna, you're gonna be a distraction and then it will be a financial commitment for the city with local funds. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez and council members. It's me again. So our capital improvement program is derived with multiple city departments. We have Public Works, Community Services, Library, Fire, Economic Development, and Information Technology Department. Next slide, please. The draft capital improvement program is being developed through three categories of projects. We have the projects that are carryover from fiscal year 22, '23. We have new projects for fiscal year 23, '24 that staff is working with finance and the other departments to program, appropriate, and/or staff accordingly. Some of these projects may be recently awarded with grants that we'll bring forward in future city council meetings. Then we have our draft list of known projects with funding gaps or that are unfunded. Next slide, please. For Public Works Department, the first category is engineering. Currently, the draft budget is twenty-nine point seven million for fiscal year 2023, '24 to 2024. The budget represents thirty-two projects, programs, and/or plans. The draft budget excludes pending projects that'll be discussed in a later slide as well as other draft working lists of unfunded projects. Next slide, please. The second category that we have is water resource recovery. That draft budget is forty-four point five million dollars. Then we have our equipment, services, and replacement with a draft budget of twelve million dollars. Next slide, please. Then we have our other departments, Community Services, Library, Economic Development, Information Technology Department, that have budgets and projects that we will continue to work with finance and staff to finalize for the five-year CIP program moving forward. Next slide, please. This is the draft budget for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. This is a list of projects that had commitments in fiscal year 2022 to 2023 with known funding sources. Staff will continue to work with finance on the proposed fiscal year 2023, '24 budget through the end of the fiscal year. For example, the traffic safety improvement project here that you can see in this list is an annual project to address traffic-related emergencies. We're working to transfer the previously approved one point two million dollar for traffic calming into a capital project and then bring it together into the traffic safety improvement project here. As staff continues to research each carryforward project listed here, we may need to seek additional funds or reduce the scope of the project. For example, we had the Thirteenth Complete Street, which we recently discussed. If it came to the point where we couldn't get the gap funding resolved, we would have to explore cutting the actual scope of the project. For example, the trees, irrigation, medians, etc. Next slide, please. This is also a list of carryforward projects from fiscal year 2022 to 2023 with known funding sources from other departments. Public Works will continue to work with these various departments listed here and finance to ensure that the draft budget for fiscal year 2023 and 2024 and the overall five-year CIP plan reflects the project's needs. Next slide, please. Here you have a draft budget for fiscal year 2023, '24 by department. Currently, it sits at approximately a hundred and seven million dollars. Next slide, please. This displays the draft budget by fund. Next slide, please.
The list you're looking at right now is the list of pending projects or programs. These are projects with identified grants that may or may not need local match. Staff is evaluating to determine if additional funds are needed. Pending supporting documentation and bringing it back to council and programs into the CIP program. Pending to verify funding. Working with other departments to determine projects deliverables. One of the projects here that we want to bring to your attention is a traffic calming program that is very important for the city council. And staff is working with finance to transfer the balance from the one point two million dollars. And I say the balance because some of the funds are for the design that we're paying for. So we want to transfer the balance from the one point, from the one point two million dollars traffic calming program and one million dollar from the paving index improvement from general fund to general capital fund for fiscal year 23, '24. This is a technicality, but it's very important because that way we can carry over these funds and put it in a capital improvement project. Next, please. The following slides show different projects that have been mentioned for different meetings from city council members. One of them, the first one, the Thirteenth Street Complete Street, is something that you already approved in the previous item with one million dollar additional. We call here one point five million dollars. The other half million dollars coming from SB1. So that would complete the need for that project. The following project is the annual roof repair for two million dollars. This is a project on an annual basis to repair different roofs for the city's facilities. The next one is the courtyard ADA bathroom in the courtyard fuel site for six hundred and twenty thousand dollars and one point two one eight million dollar respectively. Then we have emergency climate repair work account for one million dollar. That's an amount, account that we're requesting for emergency work due to climate situations. Like, for example, we just had the rains in this winter that created a lot of expenses for the city. So we would like to have a fund that is designated for that type of work. The next one is the Hilltop Green Fire Emergency Exit Route that was discussed tonight. We're putting the total cost, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, although we discussed that seventy thousand is what we would take from the general fund. Next to it is the, or below it is the illegal dumping hotspot camera installation. That is something that we would like to specifically work with the police department to add more cameras, but this time to the hotspots, the illegal dumping hotspots. And it's an annual cost about, for thirty cameras, about an annual cost for about a hundred thousand dollars. However, since it's going to be the first years, there's a lot of installation, we are requesting a hundred fifty thousand dollars to start. The next one is the park yard fuel site upgrades for one point five million dollars. Then the Richmond electrical pool box replacement for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What is that? We have received a lot of a lot of the pool boxes that we have that feed into our street lighting are being vandalized and people are stealing the wires. And then it takes a while, but a while to get back to those street lights. So we want to replace those pool boxes with pool boxes that are thief-proof, right? So that's an investment that I think that we were looking forward to have. Then the Richmond tunnel lighting for hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The San Arida wall mudslide project that happened during the rain and now we need to build a wall to protect the San Arida street and that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Smart signals project for one hundred and eighty-two. Street sweeping signs. This is something that Chief French just mentioned tonight. We are studying those discussions. We need to install street sweeping signs in the Richmond Annex and in other parts of the city. We're talking about half million dollars for that. The zero emission infrastructure transition plan. Just to start a plan, we requesting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Next, please. Then we have the Fire Department Regional Training Center for two million dollars. This is a combined project with the city of Berkeley in which the city of Berkeley is committed to provide four million dollars, while the city of Richmond, two million dollars. Then we have the Fire Station sixty-six gender-specific restroom for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The Booker T. Anderson Furniture and Equipment, as you know, the Booker T. Anderson is under construction right now, but after it's built, we need furniture, we need equipment because that was also we lost it in the fire. So we're talking about half million dollars. The Booker T. Anderson HVAC is mechanical well that we're also going to need for occupancy permits. We're talking about three hundred thousand dollars. The Booker T. Anderson Transformer pole removal, if you remember, there was during the rains and the wind, there was one pole in that park that was knocked down by the wind and a transformer was leaking, so there was an emergency work. So now we want to remove all those poles with all transformers. That's a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And we have a different parks improvements that are very important for different city council members for up to six million dollars. So we have identified so far a funding gap of almost twenty million dollars. But if we add what we estimate what we would say is an additional funding gap for information that we haven't got it yet. That we think applying a ten percent unknown situation is another three million dollars. That will give us almost twenty-three million dollars gap. Next, please.
Next, we'll give an update on some capital improvement projects from fiscal year 22, '23. Next slide, please. We've completed the Castro Ranch Road Pavement Rehab Project. We are now in the process of closing that out with our consultants and Caltrans. We also completed the San Pablo Avenue and Barrett Avenue project as well. Next slide, please. The main Yellow Brick Road project is complete. We've received additional grants to secure and complete lighting and planting-related improvements. We've also completed the Central Avenue I-80 Traffic Improvement Environmental Impact Report. The next phase for that project is going to be the right-of-way phase where we'll be getting assistance from the county. Next slide, please. Currently, under construction, we have the North Richmond Pump Station Rehab Project. It's ninety-five percent complete with one pump still to be replaced with the remaining funds. We also have the dechlorination sodium hypochlorite sodium biosulfide tanks project, ninety-five percent complete. Next slide, please. We also have the grit and aeration upgrades, which is under construction. It's eighty percent complete with a goal to be completed by October, 2023. And as previously mentioned, we have the BTA Community Center Fire Restoration Project. It's under construction and we are estimating it will be completed in mid-August of 2023. Next slide, please.
In our CIP plan, the next steps that we have is to prepare a five-year capital improvement plan book for fiscal years 2023, 2024 to fiscal year 2027, 2028. We are going to prioritize projects with grant reporting requirements, increase our reimbursement from grants, as has been directed by city council in previous meetings, but everything is connected, it's not isolated work. Then continue to develop programs and plans. The pavement management program, the sidewalk repair program, the traffic calming program, zero emission fleet and infrastructure ten-year transition plan, and the facilities needs assessment. And very important for us is to increase the CIP transparency. And talking about that specific item, it's the next slide. Next slide, please. What we're showing you there in this map is what we plan to post in our website probably in the next couple of months. The reason is that as we verify information, reconcile information with finance, we're going to feel more comfortable sharing the information with the public because we don't want to publish something that hasn't been completely clear. In this map, what you see is the districts, your districts. In this map, what you see is the districts, your districts. And the locations of the CIP projects that we have so far. Right now you don't see all the projects there, because not all the projects have been uploaded to this map yet. But you can see a few of them, you can see dots when these are specific locations. You can see lines when you're talking about streets. Next one please. This next map is exactly the same CIPs, but we are showing now a, information from the Cal Environment Screen 4.0. Which shows disadvantaged communities that refers to the areas which most suffer from a combination of economic health and environmental burdens. The, the highest or the higher the number or percentage, the more disadvantaged the community is. Next please. This is a very crowded map. Just to give you an idea what our residents will be able to see in the future. They would go to a dot or to one of the, the lines and that information would pop up. It's not that they're going to see all this at the same time. So if you go, if somebody wants to go to a specific one, let's say Wendell Park Irrigation, which is at the center of this map. A person would, would not see any of these texts. They would just go to the dot that that person is interested in and that text would pop up. With other information. I would like to bring Mark Leiner who just, who's a, in charge of managing the website and our GIS specialist. Just to give you an idea what that would look like, but just to give you a taste. But no, we're not promising anything for next week again, these would take us a couple of months to, to develop. Next please.
So yeah, this, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Yeah, so this is an example of a data, sorry. This is an example of a data-driven. A map that could be public facing and it would help out city staff as well. And all the, all the information you saw in the last slide would be available at, at people's fingertips. Including, you know, photos, any project page we might have any other further information. If we could click through to the live map. Maybe not.
KCRT, can you please click on the capital improvement projects web map? Thank you.
So as Daniel said, this is a, an example, a very draft example of what. What a live website public facing could look like. And so as, as that pop-up comes up, you'll have a, a project name, project number. Contact person in the city and then a link to, to get more information.
The city council member in that district with cell phone number and address, personal.
Perfecto.
Is the mayor included?
All of them.
Well, are you finished? If you're finished with the presentation, I'm sure we have some questions.
Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll start over here with Council, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation and I wanted to say that Joseph, uh, thank you so much for all the work that you are doing. Trying to put every capital improvement project that we have in the city in a. And in pages and in information and summarize that so we can see where it is. I had a couple of questions. One is, um. I think, uh, one is, um. We approved 3 million plus for sidewalk improvements. And I was just trying to look where they are. I know that is from general fund, I believe. So, um, where, where that is. Um, I, yeah, the, the second, maybe can I ask you three questions so you can, yeah, then. The other question is, uh, under equipment and services and replacement. Have the vehicle for the community crisis response program being budgeted for? And if they are included in these figures and especially because as we saw in the priorities. So no, uh, one of the priorities is implementing the community crisis response program and probably they will need to have vehicles. The other part is, uh, and, and two more questions I, I will have. One is, um, you put there a street calming, uh, around 300,000 dollars for this year. How do you come up with that number, right? Because we approved 1.2 for 18 projects initially and I just want like, I think like there is a, a really interest that these will be designed. Go to the faces and actually the community start seeing the, the improvement. And my last question, and I don't know if you are taking notes, so I can, um. Uh, then it is about. The Shield Read got a grant for improving the park. Uh, what is the status of that and timeline? And then I will have other comments when the time is appropriate. Thank you.
Mayor Martinez, do you want staff to take down all the questions and establish the budget checklist? So we hear all the questions from the council and respond back via email and in writing? Or how would you like us to proceed this evening? So then that way in the past, the council for the budget, they, the council members all ask questions and make a checklist. And then we have staff will research the items and then if there is an allocation for the budget, we could say yes. Or then we bring it back and say no, and the council would direct us if they want to include it or not.
Yeah, uh, I believe this will take a lot of time. Uh, because we have a lot of questions and there's a lot of material here. So I, I believe that that would be the best procedure to collect all the questions. Have you respond to all of them? Uh, so that we can come back and, and make a decision at the next meeting.
I think, but, but I would like to, because it's also, not also for us, but for the public. So, uh, I know that it's going to take a lot of time. Uh, but I, I want to see if maybe this question could be answered and published so people know. I just want to make sure that people who are listening here and listening in their houses. That they don't get kind of like, oh, you answered all, you asked all these question and. Yes, yeah. Yes.
So my understanding is, is that after the answers are published, we would come back and have a discussion.
Yes.
Is that satisfactory?
Yeah.
I love the enthusiasm. Uh, council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Um, yes, I have three questions. So the first question is also about the traffic calming program because I don't quite get it. Maybe that one wouldn't need to come back. It could be a simple answer because it's saying staff is working with finance to transfer the balance from the 1.2 million. And there's 1.1 million identified. So is it just the point one million extra? Or is it a whole 1.2 million added on to the 1.1?
I'm sorry, we're, we're not answering the questions now, we're taking the question.
Okay, all right, I just thought it might be an easy answer. Um, the other question that I have is in regard to the 6 million dollars for park improvements. Um, it would be nice to have a little detail on that. I mean, I know I've talked about it in a recent retreat and other times bathrooms and lighting. So I would like to know if there are bathrooms, park bathrooms and lightings, lighting as part of that 6 million dollars. And the third question has to do with, um, the, the street, who is this here? The street calming, not street calming, uh, street sweeping where you're saying, um. Excuse me, I don't know where it is now. Um, but I recall it saying Annex and Citywide. I'm not sure why Annex is pulled out because there's 16 neighborhoods without any signs. Um, my question is if you, and I understand that, you know, this money is for signs. I know, um, some of our neighborhoods are really clear that they would like smaller signs rather than the big signs. So my question is, can the signs for any of the neighborhoods be small signs? Thank you.
Councilmember Willis and then Sopeda and then Robinson.
Okay, yeah. One thing I'll say briefly is I'm happy just to see the Wendell irrigation issue on here. It's been a point of contention for a couple of years, so I'm just happy to see it make it such as thank you for that. Uh, my questions, which, yeah, my questions are as follows. I see 1 million dollar allocation to go towards the paving index. Um, I guess that's more of like, is that adding on to existing funding we have for paving? Or is 1 million dollars even enough to do paving? Because I've heard, I feel like that's a very expensive thing. Uh, with the cameras in the hotspot areas for illegal dumping. Considering we just had a presentation from the chief about the license plate readers and how successful those have been. I'm wondering if those cameras are going to serve the same function or what that coordination looks like. So we're going after bad actors who are doing illegal dumping and discouraging it as much as possible. I just wanted to know a little bit more about that coordination. And the other one, I don't know how you'll respond to this in writing, but for the electric boxes. I remember having a conversation with staff about it, you know, they're getting pulled out and then it takes a while to replace them. It's also thousands of dollars to replace a simple bit of copper. So my question goes into exactly as we're replacing these boxes. How secure and reinforced are they going to be? For example, if I decided to get mad one day, go into the back of my car where there's a crowbar to jack up my car too. And decided to go at it as much as possible. Would it stop me from getting in with all the fury I have in me in a crowbar? Or are we just kind of putting money towards inevitable? I know it's going to get fixed, but my point is I just want it to be as secure as possible. So we don't have to go back and replace them anytime soon. So those are my questions.
Uh, Councilmember Sopeda.
Thank you, great presentation, thanks for the laughs. Um, a couple of things. First, I'll start off with the website. That was on my list, you hit it off the ballpark, thank you. To use Mr. Cheveria's original game. Um, on slide 28 though, I do show in there, uh, and I'm not sure what this is referencing. Uh, I might've missed it, but Chevron is in the highest percentile of need. Um, so maybe it's looking at something else, but I doubt they are in need of our services. So they have a bigger budget than we do. So we might want to just look at, I don't know if this is being published somewhere else or not, but just, I just noticed that. I was like, mm, I think Parkchester has a lot bigger needs. Um, and I, and I apologize, I might've missed this, but where's the funding coming for all these different items? Have we already figured out, are they coming from general budget? Uh, we have the zero emissions plan. I'm hoping that is coming out of the ECIA fund because we have got money for that. Uh, so I just want to make sure where is that money coming from, from each one? Uh, can we add additional funding for cameras? I know that we just found funded some, can we add more? I think they're working and as, as we're installing, it might be the right time to just continue that project and not stop. Cause we now, we know that they're working. Um, how can we? Are there any synergies with the different projects? So I'm assuming next week, once we approve this, we are going to know what projects are coming up. Are there synergies there when we go out to RFP? So we can say, you know, you can bid on multiple things and hopefully we do one big RFP and you get a lot of different responses. And that might be able to help us. Uh, are there savings? If we have people bid on multiple projects, can we get some savings out of that? Um, can we combine projects at the end of the, at the end of the day there? Um. Can we, are we able to add a, uh, in the, in the somewhere list somewhere? Uh, if the requests to do these projects are coming from the city or they're coming from certain council member and the district. I know the map's already showing the district, but it'll be good to kind of show it in case the community wants to know where this is coming from. I know that, uh, I just forwarded you a list, long list from my community of projects they want. So it'd be good to know where they initiated, uh, so we can help track it that way as well. And I can't read the other, my other writings, so I think that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Robinson.
Great, so, um, thank you for this. I think we're moving in the right direction in terms of getting a hold of what's happening with capital projects. My questions have to do a lot with nerdy things like formatting. And I wonder if it's possible to get, um. The budget in a, formatted in a way where we can clearly understand. And separate out kind of. Long-term projects that we're only going to do some, one part of during this, this, this budget year. Um, annual projects like that are more like ongoing funds, like the roof repair, the paving index, emergency climate fund. We're always going to need to put funds in there. And maybe some of those funds, like the pavement fund, we actually need to have a planning process to increase the amount of money we're putting into there. So we can have enough money to affect the paving index, right? So can we get formatting in a way so we understand the kind of, um, the different ways that these, 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 these. These projects will roll out. Two, I feel like we need kind of two side-by-side documents. Um, and I'm wondering if we can get that. Um, one is the actual four-year budget. You know, where we're saying, you know, we're going to allocate funds, we're going to spend in this way over the four years. But another one is like a more of our, our kind of capital improvements plan. That includes all the projects we may want to do in maybe a longer term or an unidentified term. So we can put on there things like the police department or, you know, building MLK Center. Not just, you know, having the little bit of money that from the insurance that was left over. With the estimated, the current estimated cost of doing whatever that is. Cause I feel like, um, what happens is, is that we get opportunities when funds come up. But if we don't know about everything that's possible, all the possible things we could spend it on. We only know about the things that were presented. We can't do things like, oh, we should put some more money in that paving index because it really needs this much. Or, you know, we, if we really want to move, you know, the MLK Center forward, we can, we need to do this, you know? Um, so my question is, can we have kind of two documents? One is, is a complete list that gives us. The total estimated cost of a project current, because it's always going up. We always know, we know about escalation. Um, and then side-by-side other information like the amount that's currently secured or encumbered. The amount that's currently expended and the amount that's needed. We had a column that just clearly said what was needed that was totaled. That could really be directive for council. Um, so that's, that's that. And then my last question is 32 projects currently, not even including some of the ones that I know I would love to see on that list. How many projects can the department really do in a calendar year? Like what's, what's realistic? And, um, I mean, I think that that's important to know. I mean, I know it's kind of different because different projects, different sizes and maybe there's a way to kind of. kind of put a container on that, so we can set proper expectations. Um because it's it's unreasonable in my mind to expect us to be able to finish thirty-two projects in a year.
Just to clarify, it's forty-three.
Forty-three.
Because there there are eleven in wastewater.
Uh we we understand.
Yeah. So the question is, you know, is there a way to estimate in number of projects or give an estimate of project hours or something like that, so we could figure out how many projects we could actually do in a year? And then we could set priorities, prioritize those projects. Because uh the last, the last piece of what I'm saying, I'm actually gonna leave for comments because it's not a question. It'll be good. Thank you.
Okay, uh Councilmember uh Sayen Bana.
Thank you. Some quick questions. So um uh in your report, please make it simple, Mac, how much money we have to play with, if any, or we are short in the next presentation. Also, I love the website. If we could have a way of also seeing reported issues that people report to the department, whether by the app or hover and their status, so they can follow up to make sure they're heard. That'd be awesome, you know? And the map with explanation, you know, received, taken care of, whatever. I would like to see what you think about the impact of cameras and traffic calming. While some people are very much for uh some traffic calming engineering, some people say it's just ugly and changes the texture of the city. So if you could look into possibly cameras having an impact on sideshows and stuff, that'd be great. Um and you mentioned city council requests from us where other cities don't have so many requests. I would like to see a report of how productive those requests are or they are bug type. We need to know, so we would appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
And now we come to me. Um I I I I I think that the city is blessed to have a city council who has so many demands. A city council who actually goes through the city and sees what needs to be done and and uh and demands that that they get done. So um but aside from that, um I I'd be interested in knowing um our our current um paving index improvement. Uh where we're at, how much money it takes to get to each level. Um that would be uh something that I would like to see. And and the other thing is uh the illegal dumping hotspot camera installations. Um I talked to some camera people who had independent cameras that could be moved from place to place depending on need. Uh I was wondering if if you had talked to them and what you thought of them. I I know they made a presentation to the IT department and they gave us a a camera to to uh play with, to inspect, to see whether or not it would meet our needs. So I'd be interested in knowing whether or not you've had a chance to examine that camera and what you thought of it. So we've given you a lot of questions and uh I know that if you were to answer all of them, we would be here till eleven o'clock. And we wouldn't have time for comments. So at this point, do we have uh public comments?
We do not have any requests to address the council.
Then it's our turn to make comments and we'll see how much time it takes. Um Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Jimenez.
I think I have one, one comment, um and that is um, you know, limits. Uh I'd really love us to embrace limits. We know that it, I mean, I I I anticipate you coming back and letting us know that thirty-two projects is not a realistic goal. Um and I think it would be really good to actually use this document and the other documents to actually set limits. Um things like, we know there's a certain amount of maintenance that needs to be done in our city in order to keep it, so it's not falling apart. Setting aside staff time that can't be used for special projects, that has to be used to go towards pavement, to go towards roofing, to go towards all those annual things that we need to be doing. Setting that aside and having special projects be only for the time outside of that time. So we're making sure to be, you know, responsible stewards of the built environment that we are all, you know, responsible for caring for during our terms in our seats. Um I think that just kind of following from that, I think that that would be really healthy. It would make it so the team starts out. And then we really force council to prioritize special projects and really work through priorities and then take on more projects after those first priorities are done. I think that that could be very healthy and very good um for us to do. And then kind of this final comment or note is just um I think it's really a powerful thing to be able to have a solid plan. So you can say, not say no, but say not now. You know, not now. Now now can be just fine, especially if you have a plan and you know that it's coming later. So setting up these documents, so we can confidently, without anybody feeling burned, say not now. And here's when it's coming. I think that that's where we should be going with these capital plans, having them be inclusive, having them be a time-based and having them allow us to comfortably say not now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember uh Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. Um I think for me is also about planning, so we can show the community where things are at. Um for me in in District Six, as as you uh hear the report from Chief French, uh a lot of the collusion and a lot of the accidents are occurring in District Six. She mentioned San Pablo Avenue, Thirty-seventh Street and Barrett, Thirty-seven and McDonald, Twenty-fifth and McDonald. And we have like today, they um the people who had been organizing in Keith and Barrett um just show that they had been side shows and a major accident occurred this morning at seven AM. Um so I I think it's also uh that there are things that people want to see now because accidents are happening, all of these. So if we uh can also start to see uh information about how this is going to be addressed and the timeline. So uh the community knows that, yeah, we cannot just kind of like a ma- have a magic wand and say like, you have the, it's three coming right now. But at least that they know that it's not in the ether and is 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 being planned. The same with um the parks. I think like there is a lot of interest from many council members. And today we have a meeting about a expanding soccer fields and multipurpose fields. Um so having and and there is kind of like a strategy of like um doing something uh in in the shorter term and in the long term, involving the community and so forth. So uh I think like having also that in in the plans to show that it will be important. Um and then kind of like the vision of like, uh we were talking about a sport complex, what it looks like and and have also that planned and and be in the in the, in this plan is important. It uh so that we, as Councilmember Robinson says, like, when we have extra funds, uh we can be a, all us kind of like informed that and and informed and also have a discussion of that conversation. So no, it's not just like a project that is new or coming up and is pushing through council to get approval. Um so I think like what uh I am asking and I think like what is the desire is that um with all that information, we can be more proactive in making decisions about where to put that money and moving these projects. But the 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 information is there, so um I think like I will end with, it will be good in this description of each project that we have a timeline, where is at, where if we had the money, uh the total costs, uh if it's funded or if unfunded and where the uh the fund is coming from, right? If from the general fund, from the non-general fund, if uh specific, the stack contact and the department or so just kind of like more detail about each particular project will be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Bana.
Thank you. Um. I just wanted to thank you uh for being open to suggestions. I know we take a lot of your time. But just for working with other departments, you know, with the police department on cameras, with the fire department and firelands and safety projects, recreation, uh parks, everything, and with the council members and soccer fields, I really appreciate it. And um I also would like to second what um Dorian and Claudia said about coming up with short-term goals and long-term goals. And I think uh through our disagreements, actually, we're making good progress. I'm very optimistic despite all the shortcomings. Um yeah, I think we're doing great. You guys are doing great. Thank you very much for your leadership, Daniel. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see. Uh go ahead, the Councilmember Willis.
Thank you. And yeah, um I do want to say to like just hearing some of the background and knowing all the stuff that you're juggling at the same time between us as a council residents and just the day-to-day operations, just really do appreciate all the work that goes into this and don't want to take that lightly. And on top of the um comment with just the short-term goals and long-term goals, also just on the flip side of that too, I'd be interested in like issues that do get raised, like what is gonna be like, how long is it gonna take in general? Like, oh, is this an issue that could be done like that? Or, oh, this is something that we're gonna have to really think about. Um like, for example, a simple uh hole in the pavement, how long is that gonna take versus a gigantic capital improvement project for an entire block? And also, I just wanted to just mention this just because it comes up for uh, it's come up over the years. Um and I mentioned it yesterday, just wanting to see like where are the capacity issues that are in the various department? What are some of the needs and challenges that you're dealing with? To better understand like how we can effectively approve service delivery too. So when constituents are calling the city or the apartments about an issue that they're seeing, that they're able to actually see some activity uh happen around it sooner rather than later, as opposed to something that does disappear. I mentioned that before, but and I know um with the traffic calming too, I would be interested in just kind of having more of a comprehensive conversation on the traffic calming study. I mean, I see one point one million dollars towards a traffic calming program. And the first question I ask myself again, is that enough? And or exactly how much is one, what is one point one million gonna give the city of Richmond in terms of traffic calming? What does that actually look like? And, you know, why? Just so we can better understand like, you know, the scenario, the challenges in front of us and figure out effective ways and how we can build up on it, even if we can't have it all now, how can we get it all eventually? Just stuff like that. So when we're talking to constituents and folks that are having those issues, we can confidently be like, well, here's the issue, here's some of the strategies and figure out a collaborative way to work with people, as opposed to just saying, I'm sorry, I don't know what to tell you. We're just not gonna do that. I know that's not how it is, but you know, everybody has a lot of issues going on from day to day and sometimes people just want their roads fixed or a pothole filled in. And I can agree and sympathize with that. And I just want to make sure that we're understanding the capacity of our departments and the needs there, so we can all reach the goals together. So thank you again for all your hard work and being here at almost ten o'clock again on a Tuesday night.
Thank you, Councilmember Willis. Council Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Um yes, thank you very much for all your work. Uh well done. Um I want to echo what Councilmember Bana said about, if possible, getting up on the website. Um the citizen request um forms and uh where they're at. And because people are always saying, and they send me the forms they sent in, that they sent a form and, you know, they haven't gotten a response. So um it would be good to have that to check. Um to have the public be able to check where things are at. Um I also want to just touch on uh Carlson Boulevard. Um first of all, I want to thank, um I want to thank you, Daniel, for, you know, having Robert uh have an uh email communication with me and I have a meeting set up with him. Um I know he's on vacation this week, so he was very helpful. Um one of the things that I learned is that Carlson is really a semi arterial. It's not like McDonald Avenue or San Pablo Avenue where there's all kinds of lights. And yes, there's collisions on those streets as well. This is a street that's, it's kind of semi arterial. People do cross it with pedestrians without streetlights. And there was a woman who was killed two months ago. It wasn't in my district. It was actually in Councilmember Robinson's district. Um the vast majority of Carlson Boulevard is in District Five, but a small part of it is in District Three. And sadly, the woman pedestrian was killed by a hit-and-run driver. And then there was, you know, as we heard from um Chief um French, that, you know, there are significant um accidents in the Carlson Avenue um vicinity. So I will just end by saying, I appreciate that the conversations are continuing. And I'll be meeting with Robert and I'll look forward to all your responses for all of our questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bana.
Thanks. I'll make it quick. So I just wanted to say, having those short-term and long-term uh goals also prepares us for applying for grants. And uh in my um District Four, there is a lack of parks. So I hope we can include around one million dollar for buying a property to have parks. And through that one million dollar, hopefully we can bring five to ten million dollars grants in to develop the park. So having these plans ready and in place enables us to bring more grants money um to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah, just a couple of things that I forgot to to say. And um one of them was, you know, if if we do go down a road where we're actually setting limits on, based on the amount of staff time we have to move these projects forward, it it creates the opportunity for us to prioritize so that things like hazards can be addressed first. Um as opposed to the kind of nice-to-haves, you know, that we could maybe put on, you know, after we've addressed serious community hazards. Um so I just feel, I just wanted to underscore that. And then I wanted to also kind of, I forgot to mention this and I wrote this down, is that, you know, there, I believe there's some un- some unusual kind of capital improvement things that we should include, like a tree replacement plan. Because when you have a place like Richmore Village that has trees that are now at the end of their lifespan and it's the whole neighborhood, um and they're very large trees, it becomes a capital project to deal with that issue. Um it is not a simple, you know, kind of bring out the the chainsaw and cut a few limbs, but you actually have to replace, you know, entire huge trees and in sidewalk. And, you know, there's the utility lines and everything. So I would like to also see um a tree replacement plan as a part of that. Because this is, you know, trees don't live forever. Um some of them live very long times, but some of them do not. They have like fifty, seventy-year lifespans. And some of those trees that were planted back in the fifties are now at the end of their lifespan. And we need a plan because it's expensive to deal with that in a whole neighborhood. So um I just wanted to make that clear. I think we need to include Richmore Village in particular. And then if there are other ones that, you know, the arborist or the not, the tree team knows about, we should make a plan for that.
Thank you. Um let me get my timer set here for. Councilmember Sapeda.
Thank you. I'm gonna be very quick. And we could also look into the options uh when we're doing paving. Uh the options between concrete and asphalt. I think we had talked about it before. See if there's any cost savings in there. We know that asphalt is less expensive, but we have to repair more often. Concrete is more expensive, but we have to repair less often. So the lifespan might just take us a little bit longer and it could be worth it. So the lifespan might just take us a little bit longer, and it could be worth it at the end. But maybe we can figure out a cost in seeing if the council is willing to do it or not, and what the pluses and minuses may be. I know that we can't put concrete everywhere, or there's other material out there that can last a little longer more than asphalt. Might help the lifespan of our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I call on Councilmember Jimenez, I want to let people know that I've been keeping track of time. At this point, Robinson has 1 minute and 8 seconds. Jimenez has 1 minute 10 seconds. Councilmember Bana has 3 minutes 22 seconds. Councilmember Willis has 2 minutes 8 seconds. McLaughlin, Vice Mayor, has 2 minutes 50 seconds, and I have all the time in the world. Okay, Councilmember Jimenez.
Okay, I think my last question is that I remember that City Council approved the local road safety plan, which was a really comprehensive plan. And I wonder, and they prioritized some part where they were going to be working on applying for some grants. So I would like to have an update about where this local road safety plan is and what is the implementation? What is the faces that we are having? Thank you.
Thank you. You're down to 31 seconds. Are there any more comments? If not, then you have a lot of questions and a lot of comments that were disguised as questions. And yes.
I just want to say that I'm very proud of the team we have, not only in Public Works, but also in the Finance Department, from the City Manager's Office to Community Services Department, all departments that we work with, board. You have, and I say you, not only City Council, the community, a very committed staff. Everybody's here because we want to make a difference. And believe me, this is probably the only city I know that has three council meetings a month. And it is, Wednesday mornings are very rough, very rough. But we, I'm very proud to say that I'm with the Team Avengers. We're with the Avengers here, and we're very happy to serve this community.
And I'd also like to say that on this side of the dais, you have a very committed, fantastic group of people. We are here to provide the best services to the city. We want to make sure that we turn over every stone and make sure that it's paved underneath. But we also recognize that we have a team on the other side who is just as good as we are. And so together, we're going to accomplish so much. This is a beautiful city, and it's going to be even more beautiful. So thank you for your service. And that goes to all the other staff, I mean, our city clerk, our city manager, our legal department. And, yeah, and to our community who has sat out here and waited for, I don't know, Epiphany? Anyway, thank you. Next item.
The next item is under Public Hearings, and it's Item R1. Pursuant to public notice, it's time to hold a public hearing to introduce an ordinance for first reading, establishing certain fees for the proposed master fee schedule. ACRT, can you please put the presentation on? Go ahead and get started. Good evening, Mayor Martinez, Vice Mayor McLaughlin, Councilmembers Antonio Banyolos, Accounting Manager in the Finance Department, and I'll be providing an update on the master fee schedule for this public hearing. Here's a quick agenda. Next slide, please. So. Although fees were adopted last year, some in March and others in May, the update was really a continuation of 2021 update. Here, we're trying to catch up to the fees that were updated last year. Most fees are increasing by the Employment Cost Index, which is a very specialized CPI, Consumer Price Index. But the municipal code calls for the Employment Cost Index for the Bay Area. For fees adjusted last year, the rate is 9.1%. But those fees that were new last year, there's no catch-up needed, and those are going up by 5.2%. As part of the regular review of fees, we review and analyze all the fees. In some cases, we increase this, other times we decrease some. Some cases, we even delete them. The city should only charge the amount of cost to provide the corresponding services that are being paid by the payers. Next slide, please. For new fees, staff works with consultants in most cases to process the fee analysis, like with the fee updates, the consultant working with staff, look at who does what, and how much it costs, how long it takes to provide certain services. And from that, we get an approximation of the cost in total. We try to collect a fully burdened amount, so includes overhead, any sort of items that go into providing that service. This year, Community Development Department worked with SCI Consulting Group to process the cost recovery analysis for commercial cannabis regulatory fees. The proposed regulatory fees cover the cost of permitting and regulating cannabis operations by various city departments. The study was undertaken to reflect the transition of enforcement activities from the Richmond Police Department to the Code Enforcement Unit, and updated activities by various city departments. These costs are allocated to the payer in a way that demonstrates that the cost bear a reasonable relationship to the payer's burden on or benefits of the program. These fees are listed in the ordinance and in the Commercial Cannabis Fee Report that was listed as an attachment. Slide, please. So next step. So this is the first reading of the ordinance, is really adopting the proposed new fees. We'll come back to City Council in a couple of weeks for the second reading, and with the actual adoption of the fees that are being increased. So again, this ordinance just for new fees will come back in early June for the regular adoption of the fees that are already in place that were increasing by ECI. Also, staff will continue to work with departments and consultants to finalize the impact fees charged to new development. We'll be returning, hopefully, in June with the reports, working with various departments, with a consultant, with the Public Works Department, Community Development to finalize that report. Finally, staff will review all fees and determine if there are any additional fees collected by other cities, for example, that we aren't collecting. You know, we'll do a review of that, see if there are any opportunities out there that we should take advantage of. And with that, we'll open, we're open for questions from me or my colleagues.
All right. Do we have questions? I see that Councilmember Jimenez has her hand up. Go ahead.
I always have questions, especially for the Finance Department. So thank you, Antonio, for all the work. I know that this is really intense and hard work. Thank you. Can you tell me what are the fees that are not here that you don't mention or you didn't put in the fees, like you mentioned right now that you are working with a consultant?
The first page of the listing has the impact fees. Right now, we're leaving, we're not changing the amounts. It's going to come back with a consultant, be a brand-new fee based on the study, based on the actual, all the data that goes into it. And these are fees for new development.
So today, if we approve these, we are not approving that part, right?
Correct.
Okay. I have some question, like, in the Point Richmond Parking District fee.
Mayor, I think there's a point of clarification. Councilmember Jimenez. Antonio, she said, are they approving it today? What we're doing is we're, you're leaving it at the baseline. So it's not increasing yet. So it still would be approved, right? It's not like the fee goes away off the fee list. It's just, it's not increasing yet because the backup study isn't completed.
So I think it would be, it would be good to have what is the, what we are approving today, because when it's here, it's pending, so we cannot see what we are approving. So that is confusing.
Well, just for clarification, what you're approving today is the actual ordinance on the new fees, the cannabis fees. Well, we will come back in June with the actual changes to the fees. I can update the report where it's clear. Instead of having the pending fees, I'll put the actual fee, which will be flat. No changes to that.
Okay, so we are approving the cannabis fees right now, not more.
This is the approval of the first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance only deals with the cannabis fees.
Oh, okay.
We will come back with a resolution to update fees. So when it's a new fees, it needs an ordinance. When it's changes to fees, it's a resolution. Next meeting will be a resolution, typically on consent, second reading, but.
Okay, okay.
We can make the listing clear.
Yeah, I think, I think it's better because it just. I think in one, just in Point Richmond Parking District fee, you put various. I just wonder what is this and what is in the fee listed, so we know how much we are charging.
I think for the council members' ability to follow along, can we state what page we're referring to so that everyone can find it?
Okey-dokey. It's page 5 of 79.
Thank you.
Under Building Regulation, Ms. Lainey, please.
The Point Richmond. It says Point Richmond.
I'm not exactly familiar with this. I'm not sure. Being the Velasco, Director of Community Development, is familiar with that fee in particular. I don't have the information. Again, I can clarify it in the next update. Again, we're not approving these fees tonight. We're approving just the cannabis fees.
Okay, okay. So I have a lot of like detailed question, but it seems that it will take a lot of time to just like for you to go into this. So I will email it to you, and you will publish it. I just want to make sure, like, I just want to understand because this is a 79 page and with a lot of fees. I wanted to understand what we were approving tonight. And my understanding is that what we are proving tonight is the fees for the cannabis fees, and that we will be discussing this later. Is that correct?
Correct. You're approving the ordinance that's just focused on cannabis fees.
The ordinance that just focuses on cannabis. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm a bit lost here. I'm looking at the master fee schedule, and I don't have the information for the cannabis fees. Where would I find that?
It's actually in a couple of places. There was an attachment.
The number of the attachment, please.
Okay, so page 23 of 79 has the listing of the new cannabis fees. Also, Attachment 3 called Cannabis Fees Memo, which has a report. And the ordinance also has a listing of the fees.
Thank you. I found it. Sure. Go ahead.
Can I just add, on page 23 of 79, I think it might look a little different than the attachment we had on there, because this one says "previous fees NA." I remember I just missed something.
Well, just, there were previous fees. This is a new study based on the actual discussion with staff, looking at who does what. So we're, this is a new, new listing completely. The reason I put NA, because that's the typical template that we use.
Okay. So a lot of these fees are new? Or we're just re-categorizing?
They're re-categorizing. We did have cannabis fees before, but it's a new look at it from a, I guess, this consultant's perspective, working with staff in the new, I guess, reorganization of where they're at now.
Okay.
I'd like to make a procedural recommendation. There are so many sections on this that for us to discuss them all and then come to some general decision will be tantamount to a lot of, a lot of juggling. And so I would prefer that we talk about particular sections, vote on it, and then move on to another section. So, so right now, we're talking about the cannabis. So I would recommend that we discuss the cannabis, come to some understanding agreement, and then vote for it. How does, would the council like to adopt that?
I just want to mention, Mr. Mayor, that this is a public hearing. So you'll have to open the public hearing and then, you know, but then we could, I'm fine with doing it as your suggestion.
Okay, so if there's no opposition to that, I would like to do that and then open it up to, if there's more questions, we'll take more questions. If not, then we'll open it up to a public hearing.
Public hearing is open? There are no public speakers?
No public speakers. Okay, then, then I close the public hearing, and we'll have clarification, clarification questions to the staff. Are there any questions on the cannabis? Yes, please.
So, sorry, I might just be confused here. So you have a proposed fee on page 23 of 79. I'm just going to use the very first one. Application completeness review per application. The previous was NA. The new fee is $1,019, right? So this is going to be the proposed fee. Is this an increase? Is this a decrease? Is this the same? I understand that we're sort of moving into a different bucket. But if, for the individuals that provide cannabis in our community, how are we communicating this with them? Are they paying us more? Are they paying us less? Are we just, what's the total? Or, do you get my question?
Okay.
Okay, it's light green now. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. So in response to your question, Councilmembers, overall, our fees are reducing. Part of it is the shift from the police department to code enforcement, so the cost of staff is less. In addition, we're going from quarterly inspections to annual inspections as part of the cannabis business permit process. So there's a reduction of work. But overall, the inspections will cover the same things. So in general, there's going to be a reduction where there is an increase is in the conditional use permit process. So those are the planning entitlement phases, where we want to make sure that we do pre-inspections prior to issuing the use permit to have project-specific. But in general, overall, all of the fees are seeing some reduction except for the conditional use permit.
Okay, so if, and thank you for. and, and thank you for that. So then I'll use a different line item, it's about four down. Annual permit fee, retail storefront per, permit annually. The proposed fee is three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five. And again, and this is the previous fee as N A. So for us to be able to know, and, and I understand it's a decrease, I think we'll also want to know how much are we losing? Cause that is revenue to the city. Uh, is there a way to find that out so we can?
Yes, so, so in generally it was about, and it depends on the type of operations and how many uses, but it was about twelve thousand dollars a year. So, and again, are, we are accounting for multiple uses. So a lot of times you have, uh, a cultivator who may also be a manufacturer. So they're paying both fees and the second fear, the second use is at a reduced, reduced rate, usually fifty percent of the overall costs. Um, because the inspection doesn't actually require extra effort. It's just checking off more things on the list. Um, I think over time, staff has also gotten more efficient in how we do inspections, given that there's multiple regulators. Um, but I, I think too, you know, we have seen a period of time with non-payment of fees. Um, and so making sure that the fees are right size because they felt like they weren't getting four inspections a year. They were only getting one or two. And so I think that also drove us to, to complete this report.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, um, Dave, do you want to opine for the good of the council on the requirements pertaining to fees? If that would be helpful for the discussion or not, I'm not sure.
Uh, I'm sorry, can you repeat yourself?
I was asking through the chair mayor if it would be helpful for the city attorney to opine on how fees have to be set? If that would be helpful for the good of the order?
Yes, uh, absolutely.
Sorry, Dave, I'm putting you on the hot spot.
All right, uh, let us know when you're cooking.
It's actually a complicated process. Uh, proposition twenty-six applies to the, uh, uh, determination of fees. Uh, the fees are supposed to be to cover your cost. And they're different, there's fees for different kinds of things, obviously. Um, whether we're dealing with an assessment district or, uh, a, a tax measure, but with regards to fees, the, uh, under, uh, props two eighteen and, um, twenty-six, the, you're basically supposed to, uh, recover your cost. So this is part of why on this cannabis study, you actually have a study that goes through, um, the, what, the ways in which staff ends up dealing with these permits. So what type of permit do you have? Uh, are there inspections that are involved? And when you, if you found the, uh, report in, in these materials, it actually has a pretty elaborate, uh, study that outlines, uh, how staff sees the regulatory system, when they have to deal with the permits, uh, how much time, um, is spent? Uh, what's the basic cost of the particular officer that, uh, deals with it? Whether it's somebody out inspecting or it's somebody, uh, in the city that is, um, uh, processing the permit. And you see there that there's quite a few people that are involved in that process. So it takes each person, takes the time they spend, takes what their rate is, and then adds that together to figure out what the, uh, uh, total permit fee ought to be. And, and that's the sort of study that you have to do in order to, uh, justify what your fee is. Because, um, the, these propositions have been adopted through the last twenty-plus years, uh, are trying to keep the city from, uh, making a profit on this. You're just covering your cost. And the impact fee that they were referring to, there's a whole nother statute that deals with that and actually, uh, requires you to set the impact fees into, uh, an account. Uh, you, you have to, uh, have it there, uh, at, over every five-year period. You're supposed to justify, uh, your impact fees. Uh, when you're doing the impact fee, you have to look at the infrastructure that's going to. For example, a library could be covered through an impact fee, your police station. So if you have a, if you're setting aside money to be able to, um, build these facilities, the idea is that, uh, as each development comes along, it's adding to this, uh, cost basis. And the new development has to pay for the extent to which you have to create new facilities to, uh, uh, pay for the, those new, um, uh, facilities that are going to have to get built over time. Uh, so that's a whole separate sort of study and is complicated. And so that's why, um, they have to go through a separate process, looking at the impact fees. And you have to have a study every five years to show that, uh, you're not getting out of line on that.
Do we have other questions, comments, uh, council member Robinson?
Yeah, just a quick question. I'm, I'm just wondering how our fees compare to neighboring cities? And if that was looked at, it just out of curiosity, I know that's not that way that we set fees, but I just wonder.
Well, from a cannabis perspective, um, I think we were on the higher end. Um, previously, I think these fees are more in line with what, uh, we see in other jurisdictions. Um, in addition, the tax rate, you know, Richmond has a local cannabis tax, um, which is also on the higher rate, uh, compared to other cities um, that don't, may not have one. Um, so, but I think in general, we will see a reduction, but I think we're also hoping that that will, you know, incentivize operators to pay the fee more regularly and timely. Um, and so, because that's been one concern that they've had, that it's a quarterly fee, but the inspections are not occurring quarterly. Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, um, so the item is to introduce an ordinance, first reading. Is there a motion to approve? I, I, I would like to make an emotion to approve the cannabis fees, only the cannabis fees, um, and then, uh, deal with, uh, the other fees in another time. Um, because I think like some of the, uh, council members here are interested in an equity framework for the fees. And see, especially in the community service. Um, so I think like we will need some more time. Uh, I know that this is something in the audit, but I think like, I will appreciate we have some, a little bit more, uh, time to really look at that. Um, so I will make a motion to approve only the cannabis fees for tonight. Okay, so I will second it and give the, um, chair, the, the full chairing of the meeting back to the mayor. But I do have, um, a clarifying question. So, um, if we are just approving as per council member Jimenez's, uh, motion, the, um, cannabis portion of this, it's not the ordinance, a first reading of the ordinance that we're approving at all. So, or are we approving, um, in the ordinance, are there, there are other things besides the cannabis? So I see Antonia somewhat confused, so maybe cleared up for us.
The ordinance is, the cannabis fees are the ordinance, basically.
The cannabis fees, so introducing the ordinance is all that we need to do. So. But, but I want to make sure that the, we are approving here the ordinance, uh, that is for the cannabis fee. And making sure that the other fees are going to be approved later.
Yes, we're gonna, we will return with a resolution for the rest of the fees.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so I'll, um, second the ordinance first reading.
Okay, so we have first, second, um, we have a real call.
Councilmember Zapata?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Fantastic. So, um.
Mr. Mayor, uh, can I suggest? I know that is ten thirty, but, uh, the presenter for, um, the item about A B sixty seventeen has been here patiently waiting to present. Um, can we have the presentation right now?
Um. Let's see. Um. Yes, um, uh, how much time will this one take? I mean, it, it looks like, um.
Yes, one should be very quickly.
Okay, let, let, let's go ahead and do S one, um, it, it's. So, can you read the item?
Item S wants to approve the appointment of Delmi Quelar as extra help special projects retired annuitant, annuitant for a limited term, special project role not to exceed one year, and adopt the resolution approving the hundred eighty-day wait period ex, exception.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you so much for giving us the time to hear this item. We wish to bring back retired annuitant Delmi Quelar to work on special projects in the finance department, specifically Measure U, E track it, and assisting with the state audit. This item must be heard in open session and be an action item per CalPERS, um, requirements. So we are requesting your approval to bring Delmi back before the one hundred and eighty-day waiting period.
Okay, uh, we heard, uh, actually, I, I believe we're ready to vote on this, but first, are there any questions? If not any questions, do we have public comment?
We do not have any requests, we address the council.
Okay, no public comment. Do we have, uh, any uh, council comments?
I'm with the item.
Second.
Moved by, uh, Jimenez, seconded by Willis. Let's take a.
Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zapata?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous.
Thank you so very much.
Now, uh, S two?
Item S two is to receive a presentation from Bay Area, Area Quality Management District Board members, Marisol Cantu and Jeffrey Kilbreth, and adopt a resolution in support of A B six-one-seven, immunity air protection program.
Can I make a, a quick inquiry? Um, I was a little confused with the way, with the title was. I assume this, is, is this the, are you in the steering committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's not, because the board members are all elected officials.
Yeah, it's a typo.
Okay, so it's just a.
So, yeah, everybody, uh, what, um, council member McGlaughlin is saying is that there's a mistake in the, in the intro, in the agenda. It says that Marisol and I are, uh, on the board of, of BACMED. And we are not. We are on the community steering committee, which was a board committee, but was just a, you know, a subcommittee of the BACMED board to work on the A B six-seventeen. Way.
Uh, is K C R T, can you put the, um, the presentation? Do you have a PowerPoint for presentation?
Yes, and, uh, and, uh, Marisol is going to do the first half of it and I'll finish it up.
Okay, Marisol is in, in the Zoom. Uh, can you also bring her as a?
Hi, hi, council members. Thank you so much. My name is Marisol Cantu, I'm with Jeff. Uh, next slide, please. We're gonna go.
Can I give you, well, Marisol, can you, is, uh, speak a little louder? I, I am having troubles, I'm sorry.
How about now? Is this better?
Hmm.
A little louder would be better.
Yeah, a little louder.
Okay. So we are going to go over A B six-seventeen, why it's important, and some of the background of A B six-seventeen, as well as strategies, a timeline, and examples how the city council, all of you, can help. Next slide. Okay, why this is really important for us. Um, first, this is groundbreaking as it focuses on public health in California's most polluted communities. Uh, number two, we, um, our pollution in Richmond has been underestimated and is affecting our health in many different ways. Chronic respiratory issues and as well as other cognitive development issues. Also, number three, the scope of the effort. Uh, first, there's been funding directly from the state, you know, into A B six-seventeen process. And we also will have a community engagement element as well as priority setting around some of the major polluters in the community. And of course, this is data-driven and we're holding, um, all of the different polluters accountable as well as, um, regulators, like the air district and CARB. Next slide. So the A B six-seventeen Community Steering Committee is creating a SERF. This stands for a Community Emissions Reduction Plan. And there's also a Community Air Monitoring Plan. Our area covers Richmond, all of Richmond, North Richmond, and San Pablo. There are other areas, uh, along with West Oakland. We were one of the first two communities selected by the air district to be part of A B six-seventeen. We also have an opportunity to really set precedent for all frontline communities, uh, in the state. And so we're very different from West Oakland as that we have the largest polluter right here in our backyard, the Chevron refinery. Next slide. And I'll pass it to Jeff.
Um, sometimes pollution's a little hard to get your head around. Um, you know, it's in the air and it disperses and, um, it's, it's, it's sometimes difficult to understand how much worse one place might be than another place. These, there's two maps here that will help you. And you know, one thing's very interesting at this, from this map. This is toxic releases. This is not particulate matter. This is toxic stuff. Sulfuric acid, nickel, formaldehyde, other kinds of toxics. Notice the darkest places in the map. Richmond, Rodeo, Martinez, Venetia. Venetia is, is cut off. But you know, they all have one thing in common. The refinery communities. Look at West Oakland, you can see at the bottom of the map. West Oakland is a very polluted place because of the ships and the, and the trucks. But it's not dark here. They're toxics. Because there's nothing like a refinery. Nothing. Next slide. In contrast, particulate matter spreads widely. A lot of it comes from trucks and regular vehicles, not just from industry. Although a lot comes from industry as well. But here you see many, that Richmond is bad, but many other places are also bad. And look at, look over on the, on this, on the eastern side of Mount Diablo. You know, the, the Central Valley, uh, dust hits the side of Mount Diablo, the massive of St. Mount Diablo, and just sits on that community. And they've got pollution problems from P M that are not dissimilar from West Oakland or Richmond. But our sources are different. And we have a refinery. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. One, and the important part about, about P M is that P M is very associated with asthma. And everybody knows, right, from your lived experience in Richmond, that asthma is a really big problem. Over seventy-five percent of our census tracts, these are pretty small units, census tracts, over seventy-five percent, I think it's actually seventy-nine percent of our census tracts are in the top ten percent statewide for asthma. So it's a significant problem. Um, I was just pointing out to you that it's a bigger problem for many communities, unlike the toxic problem, which is very special to particular, uh, you know, communities that are hosts to particular. you know, communities that are hosts to particular industries. Okay, and just to bring it all home, when we think about our 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 good neighbor Chevron, these are the most important toxics that we want to reduce. These are half, you could argue that reducing these emissions are at least half of BACMD and CARB's job. I mean, their other half is greenhouse gases and saving the planet. But if it's about public health, then it's about reducing these pollutants. And you see the percentage sign next to each one. For us, here in our area, what percentage of each one of these things comes from Chevron? It's a lot. It ranges from, you know, all of the sulfuric acid and all of the hydrogen cyanide to 61% of the PM 2.5, you know, to as little as 13% of the benzene. But these are the things that we need to reduce if we're going to improve public health in Richmond. Next slide. So Marisol earlier mentioned the scope of this AB 617 program. I mean, it's really quite incredible. I mean, we are in the final stages of drafting, you know, our our complete set of strategies. It'll take another six months before they're all fine tuned and BACMD management is sort of signed off on them and all of that kind of thing. But we're going to be touching, you know, 30 different areas with 50 or 60 different strategies. It's a very big, big scope and very comprehensive approach. This gives you a little bit of a taste for what you can expect coming out of this AB 617 program. Better emission exposure and health risk data, better health impact data, exposure mitigation programs, meaning like help people avoid the pollution with better ventilation, better windows, you know, that kind of thing. Urban greening, community involvement, legislation, stronger regulation of emissions, more effective penalties, accountability for the major sources, more accountability. I mean, has the refinery manager of Chevron ever addressed the city council of Richmond? I don't recall it ever happening. I would think it was be appropriate personally. But also accountability for BACMD and CARB. I mean, it's in their mission statement to protect public health. This is what it's about, reducing these emissions. Better help for major project reviews. I mean, I, many of you were here in 2012, 2014, when we all got to go through the process of the Chevron Modernization Project. And there was a 2,000 page document that you had to read. And and actually, I now know that it was misleading and inaccurate because of AB 617. So we need to, you know, you deserve better help evaluating major projects. And BACMD and CARB need to deliver better data as well as better support. And then you'll be able to make good, better decisions about what is, what's okay in terms of the public health impacts. And then finally, better monitoring of emission spikes and flaring events with better alerts. I think you all know that flaring has been up four times compared to before the, when when the modernization project went online. It went online the end of 2018. And ever since, from 2019 till now, we've had four times the flaring events that we had before. Which is saying a lot because we had plenty of flaring events before, right? But it's it's really, it's really completely unacceptable. So that's on the list, too. All right, next slide. So the timeline is pretty straightforward, where we're working real hard to finish getting all of these strategies organized. We, I think it's going to take three to six months for us to finish polishing them, but I think this is realistic. So you would be in a situation to be reviewing and commenting on them next fall. And that would be very helpful if you would find the time to be able to do that, and we'll do our level best to make it as painless for you to review them as possible, given how much you have to read. And maybe we could even get it down to five pages. Then BACMD's board will review it. CARB's board will review it. And and CARB is the ultimate decision maker here. If they accept it, that's, I believe, more or less tantamount to them funding at least most of it because some of these strategies will require money. You know, I mean, a better website, better data analytics, better analysis of emission spikes. It costs money to do these things better. And and the whole strategy thing will be laying out one year and five year goals, maybe some 10 year goals, but mostly we're going to frame it as these are our goals for launch, for strategy implementation kickoff kickoff. And this is, these are the goals for five years later, what we would expect to have achieved in five years. Next slide. So what can you do to help? And it's one of the reasons why we're here, to encourage you to think about these things. We are essentially trying to change the way BACMD in particular works. It's a big job. We've already put two years into it. It, we're going to put another year into it, and then there'll be years of implementation. It's a big job. It's a big organization. We need all the help we can get to be successful. And having the city council of the host of the biggest refinery on the west coast of North America would be very helpful to the effort. So think about it. I mean, these are just ideas for you to consider. Would, what about you having an annual meeting with the head of BACMD to talk about progress? What about you having a meeting once a year with the refinery manager about Chevron's view of progress? What about talking to the or encouraging our legislators to talk to the AG's office about the legal landscape? And this is a good example. If you imagine that Chevron was selling 30% less gas and less jet fuel 10 years from now because of everybody going electric slowly but steadily. If that happens, would you expect our pollution to go down 30%? Because they're producing 30% less oil and gas, jet fuel and gasoline for the California market? Or would you expect that they would just sell a lot more to Asia and we'd have the same pollution? That's a legal issue. That could go to the Supreme Court. But it certainly starts with going to the AG's office of the state of California because it's too big for us. But we can raise the issue. Because how are we going to reduce our pollution if they just replace any of the savings with exports to Asia? And then there's just general engagement with some of the details. So reviewing our strategy recommendations and supporting them as you see fit would help. Working, encouraging Concha Costa Health Services to 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 be involved and to stay involved would help. Keeping everybody honest. Ask ask BACMD whether Chevron actually reduced pollution or increased pollution from the modernization project. We've never gotten a straight answer. I've been asking for two years in this AB 617 process. And of course, we asked during the permitting process in 2014. We never got a straight answer. But now we have data and we we ought to, I mean, maybe it's not the most important thing in the world, but you get the point. It it puts pressure in the system to be honest, to be data driven, and to care about reducing pollution. And then finally, the last example is just yesterday, the state senate passed SB 674, which triples the number of pollutants that will be monitored at the fence line of every refinery in the state. Hadn't passed the assembly yet. But you could write a letter next week, and you could copy one of ours, you know, you know, and and send it in to support SB 674 in the assembly. And and the other one is our own assembly person, Buffy Wicks, just is 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 sponsoring a tripling of all the fines on the, for major violations at the refineries, you know, statewide. Important deal. So a letter of support from you, in addition to the one that, you know, many of us have sent, would help. But this is what I mean by engagement. We can help you make it like no work for you, you know, we can, if you, if if we stay in touch about the evolution of this program. So it's not like trying to put a burden on you, but your engagement can really be meaningful. So I just wanted to end on that note that I don't think it's in the bag that we will succeed in reducing pollution significantly at the biggest refinery on the west coast of North America. It's not in the bag, but we've made a really meaningful start. And we could use your help and we, I'm I'm sure we have your support, but. So what questions could could we answer?
Thank you. Councilmember.
As a member of the Hazardous Material Commission, who has been working very hard to make sure we do get alert, we do get air monitoring, I do appreciate your presentation. And I would like to stay in touch with you because I'm going to bring an item actually about air monitoring to the city council. So please email me or give me your email information. But I was confused about your presentation and I couldn't ask question at the middle. I'm not sure when you were saying like, that there was something about. I I didn't get what was going on. I mean, about AB 617, what is it that's coming in the fall of this year and then next year? What's going to happen? The table you had about the time.
I'm sorry.
Object.
It's what Marisol covered at the beginning. Our job, what we were created to do was to create a Community Emissions Reduction Plan.
And you created it?
We are almost finished.
And we'll see it.
Assembling you and and you, you, the time for you to review it and to comment on it to BACMD and to CARB.
Excellent. Okay.
Would be in the fall.
Okay.
Because it's just not polished yet.
Okay, and how is it determined the percentage of Chevron's contribution to each pollutant? It shouldn't be easy. How is it done?
It is mostly done by modeling. It's it's pretty complicated to, you you can't really do it by by monitoring. They have too many pollution sources. And I mean, it's a long, that's a long discussion. But in truth, it is mostly done by modeling.
Who does the modeling?
BACMD.
I'm sorry?
BACMD, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. There's a, there's a modeling and and data analytics team at BACMD.
Okay, we should invite them actually maybe to the city council and learn more from them. And I.
Well, I mean, it's, I'm not, I'm not using any numbers that I haven't worked.
No, I'm saying in general, I trust you. I'm sure the data is valid. I'm saying there's a lot more we don't know.
Sure.
This is one modeling. Probably there's more. Also, you didn't include El Sobrante. I wonder why? Because recently, there was a leak toxic dots by Martinez Refinery, which covered the entire El Sobrante Valley, partly Richmond, partly unincorporated area, but she said it's only San Pablo and Richmond.
CARB CARB created the the areas that were, that made the cut as the 17 most polluted communities in California. And they didn't, they 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 not only picked them generally, but they created the polygons that were census tract based. And most of El Sobrante is not in our our area.
Okay, that's not how we feel. We are between like two, three.
I I understand.
Yeah. The yellow dots on the map you showed, what are they? There were different shades of colors and yellow dots?
The maps, those maps are all from the CAL EnviroScreen database, the CAL EnviroScreen 4.0 database. You can go onto the web and play with it yourself, and there are many filters you can put on it. I gave you two filtered views, one on asthma, one on toxic air.
My question is, what were the yellow dots?
Our time is up.
Less.
To.
Dark, dark green and black were the worst. Yellow was not so bad.
Excuse me?
Make a motion to extend.
Okay, there's a motion to extend the meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Can I, can I clarify my motion? So motion to extend the meeting to the end of this presentation, pushing S three to a different meeting.
I I do want to ask for a slight adjustment of your motion because I have a memorial that I want to give. Last time, we didn't have time for memorials. So to finish this item and then to have any memorials.
Go with that.
I I second that. Real call?
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zapata?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Let's move. So are there comments, questions?
She was still.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say it's a very useful presentation. Thank you. Let's work together on air monitoring and alert. I think it's a very good idea. Also, to keep Chevron accountable. I I agree with you. We should invite Chevron general manager to the city council and have him answer our questions, and I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zapata?
Jeff, thank you so much for the presentation. Great to see you and great to see the work that you that you and others in AB 617 are doing. He's one of the original founding members of the group. So great to see the work still being done. So thank you. Are we focusing, since since I left, on air pollution on the bridge and the backup into the surrounding communities? I know that we had, we had talked about it before, and now I know there's more focus on what the backup on the bridge is doing to the communities, especially in Santa Fe, Point Richmond.
Marisol, do you want to take this or you want?
Marisol, you might be on mute if you're speaking.
Well, what I, what I can say is that, again, I mean, neither Marisol nor I are on the vehicles, you know, the vehicular traffic committee that's working on those strategies. And a lot of that is working with CARB because CARB owns all the regulation of marine rail, or rail is federal actually, to a large degree, but CARB basically is the watchdog on the feds on rail and has regulatory responsibility for ships and vehicles. So BACMD has regulatory responsibility for stationary source pollutants, polluters like like refineries or Sims Metal or or the the sewage treatment plant or the, you know, the, or the dump, you know, any of those kinds of things. So this is a traffic issue. And it's not something that we have, has been on the top of our list. But I I would have to get back to you, and I can. I I just have to talk to the the people on the committee that's been doing the vehicular stuff. I just don't know how much they have been focused. It may have been mostly focused on the logistics and distribution issues on Richmond Parkway and the and getting the trucks to to less polluting engines, you know, and those kinds of things, rather than looking at a particular traffic problem that's, you know, like the bridge. So but I can ask them and and hook you up if you want to put in your two cents on that. So, but I can ask them and, and hook you up if you want to put in your two cents on that.
Please, thank you. There might be funding opportunities there that, that can help us, uh, overall. Um, are we still partnering with Google to do the air monitoring around the city? I know that was a project Google had before.
Oh, did, was Google behind the company that was doing the, the mobile air monitoring?
Yes.
Oh, I, I didn't even know that, cause I, I wasn't working on that. But I know the company did it. I just didn't know they were owned by Google. Okay, um, don't know. But as far as I know, that, that, that company is still alive. They're, and they're, they've been doing work in West Oakland. They've done, they did work in Richmond. I think they're, now they're working in East Oakland. Cause East Oakland got added along with Bayview Hunters Point. So now there's four of us in the, in the Bay Area.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then have we looked into increasing monitors since the beginning of AB six one seven? Are we constantly adding more or?
Um, well, I got to tell you, I've been really frustrated and really annoyed on, on, on monitoring. And the number one issue I have is that we, we don't, here in Richmond, it has much worse pollution from a toxic point of view. We don't even monitor everything they monitor in San Jose. And there are so many, and most of our top toxic pollutants don't get monitored at all. You know, because it's hard or we don't have the technique or, 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 you know, whatever. You know, there's 101 reasons, but, but the point is, if you just were an outsider or a business person, you'd say, you know, what's wrong with this picture? We're not doing, you know, we should be monitoring our most toxic pollutants. And we should be monitoring both for regular ambient air and for spikes. And, you know, and blah, 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 you know, we should have a plan. And, and honestly, this, this bill that ju- is just passed the senate, six 74, SB six 74, is a huge step forward, because it's going to force, um, Chevron and BACMID to, to be monitoring, you know, 15 or so of the top pollutants instead of five or six.
Thank you. Thank you for that. My time's up. Thanks so much.
Any other questions? There was no public comment? Did we do that already?
We have one speaker?
Okay.
And that speaker is, uh, Mark Wasberg. Mark, please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
This guy's talking a bunch of lies. He's there talking about modeling. He's not telling what modeling is. Oh, it is, man. It's all just a bunch of garbage. I, I've been living in this area for over, over 50 years. I worked at Chevron for about seven years, worked in arsenic. My lungs are perfectly fine. I want metal, I want some medical records. I want proof on how, how these people are getting asthma from Chevron and how pollutants uh, are, are killing these people. Do you realize only 1% of the people that worked at Chevron for over 30, 40 years never came down with cancer or any other illnesses? So how can you say that Chevron's a good, w- one of the worst, uh, polluters here? I said, I said, this clown's talking, I bet he fills up his gas with, with the Chevron gas. You see how stupid he is? It's a bunch of stupid radicals over there trying to destroy the combustion engine. They're trying to destroy millions of jobs, but it ain't going to happen. I mean, this is one of the most stupidest things I ever seen in my entire life. You got a bunch of green pea people up there wanting to destroy the combustion engine. But, uh, I don't believe a damn word this clown's saying. And I'll see how you people could believe this here. You look at the sky, the sky is perfectly clear. What are you going to do? Put millions of people out of work? I said, this guy's talking out of his ass. He's one of these radicals you have in our government that's want to put millions of people out of work. But I tell you one thing, I wa- I want medical reports. I want to see how many people are coming down with asthma, cancer and so forth that live by Chevron. I want to see it, just like this coal crap. They're trying to say people are having the asthma because of coal. There's not one bit of evidence that the people are having the cancer of coal. It's all just a bunch of pack of lies.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Jamie Parcio?
Well, I can follow up that with, I want to thank Jeff Kilbreth and, and Marisol Kontu for bringing this forward. I think that there's a lot of really important work going on right now and we, um, have, I want to say almost everybody here is, i- if, if not officially, an environmentalist. So I really hope that you guys will, uh, recognize that as above, so below. The things that affect our air, affect our soil, affect our water, it, to your point about, uh, traffic and how that has leaded, led to a lot of particulate matter. But as well, we are absolutely not testing nearly enough, whether it be the air, whether it be the soil or the water coming through Richmond. It affects people not only with their asthma, but there are other more subtle ways, like perhaps mental health, uh, and things like that, that we really should be attentive to, especially because we have a large, uh, as we all know, we have a large population with asthma, but there is probably far more people who actually have other health conditions they don't even know about, because whether they have access to healthcare or whether they even are able to make that association of what their, how their health is being affected to their environment. So I think this is really important. I hope you guys will all move forward with this and be able to be supportive, not just in the ways that he is, uh, not just in the ways that he's describing, but coming up with your own ways to be able to be proactive about this, whether it be air monitoring over in, uh, the edges of Richmond for like El Sobrante area, or whether it be actually doing soil testing along the line, uh, the fence line of Richmond and having more air monitors out even into the ocean to be able to see what is being drawn out, um, uh, away from us. Because there are many ways that we are actually not just affecting the citizens of Richmond, but as Bana had pointed out, we're affecting actually number of different communities adjacent to us. And I think that that is really, um, you know, we, we have been frontline as far as leading the effort against, uh, or leading our effort for environmentalism. And this is just going to be the next step to step us up. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, in the interest of time, I would like to make a motion to approve a, uh, resolution in support of AB six 17.
Second. Uh, I'm sorry, the resolution has a lot more than support of AB six 17. It has uh, implication for our budget. It has things that I have question about, do not make sense. So I strongly suggest, even though time is short, uh, let's read it and make sure what we are passing. It's just not a resolution in support. It's, it, um, may I, Mr. Mayor, read?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, for example, it says, um, be it further resolved that the Richmond City Council does hereby ask the report, I don't know what that means, ask that the report and recommended strategies directly address the following key issues of community concern. First of all, I don't understand what it means to ask the report and recommend. And then achieving a major 75 year percent, the all, all those things. It takes, uh, some of them take a lot of budget from us to do it. We, we shouldn't make a promise that you cannot fulfill.
Could you explain? Because I don't think like, uh, Councilmember Bana is really understanding this resolution.
Yeah, I, I, I don't understand why you say what you just said. The only people who can have a budgetary stake in this are BACMID and CARB and perhaps pollutant sources that may be required to do things, uh, like reduce pollution. It has nothing to do and never will have anything to do with the Richmond budget. And I mean, it's that simple. The report is the community emissions reduction plan, meaning a set of strategies that are in a report. That's what.
That, that may be your intention. This is not how it is. It says, let me read it to you again. The Richmond City Council does hereby ask that the report and recommended strategies directly address the following key issues of community concern. What does it mean that report and recommended strategies address these issues? I don't get it.
It, it, if, if you, if you, if you believe that those issues are important issues, then the strategies would be designed to address the problems in.
The wording is not, I'm not, I, I don't disagree with you. I fully support whatever you say. All I'm saying is the wording is not correct. It needs to be worked on.
No, no, the wording is correct. The wording states that we as a council direct or, or approve, um, yes, uh, it says that we do hereby ask that the report to recommended strategies directly address the following key issues of community concerns. So, so we're, we're not, it, it doesn't say that we uh, are doing it. We ask that the report and the people who are doing the report and the people responsible.
The upcoming report in fall, not the report you just provided. Okay, that would have been totally nonsense. Okay. All right. Okay.
So, so, so I made a motion that we approve.
Second the motion.
It was seconded by Councilmember Willis. Oh, sorry, third.
Councilmember Robinson.
There was a motion by the mayor and there was a second by Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Real call, please.
Councilmember Bana?
I'm still confused about this. I'm gonna abstain because next it says further resolved, there be sufficient funding to support the. First of all, it doesn't identify what report it is. It fails to do that. Then it says sufficient funding. It doesn't say.
Can, can we continue the, the call? So you, you say, you abstain. Uh, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zapata?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Passes with Councilmember Bana abstaining.
Thank you so much, Jeff and Marisol, for all the work that you are doing to read, to help us to reduce emissions. And this is how city council is supporting that. So thank you.
Yes, we appreciate your work and now it's time for a memorial.
Thank you. One of the more.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would like us to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Dr. Carol Wayland Connor, who passed away peacefully on April 22nd, 2023, and who was the Mercida or Spiritual Director of Sufism Reoriented, an American spiritual school founded by Mayher Baba that honors all spiritual traditions and the essential unity of all life. In recent years, Dr. Connor won national prominence and numerous civic awards for the volunteer powered service programs she created. Dr. Connor was best known as the founder of the nonprofit White Pony Express, which delivers fresh surplus food gathered from supermarkets to those who are hungry throughout our country. As part of this work, millions of nutritious meals have been delivered to low income residents and schoolchildren in Richmond. Now in its 10th year, White Pony Express has rescued and delivered 24 million pounds of nutritious food, more than 20 million meals, and prevented 30,000 tons of CO2 emissions from entering the air we breathe. According to Dr. Connor, human brotherhood is not something to aspire to. It is the central fact of our existence. In this beautiful world we share, love knows all, does all, and is the most powerful force in the universe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. Are there any other memorials? If there are no other memorials, then this meeting is adjourned.